Good evening. I want to thank you for joining us this evening to welcome our new superintendent officially to our district in San Bernardino City Unified. I appreciate your being here this evening to celebrate this opportunity to recognize him as our new leader. So I would like to first start by recognizing some dignitaries who joined us to pay honor to our new superintendent as we officially welcome him to our district. First, I'd like to recognize that we've had Assembly Member and Majority Leader Eloise Gomez Reyes here this evening, as well as her husband Frank Reyes, who is the trustee with the San Bernardino Community College District. Thank you very much for joining us. Dr. Ann Verisell is here as well. She's come as the president of the San Bernardino Community College District, and I want to thank you very much, yes. And I'd like to also recognize Diana Rodriguez, the new chancellor for the San Bernardino Community College District, yes. Pleased to have you here. Accompanying her is Dr. Scott Thayer, who's been appointed as the interim president of San Bernardino Valley College. We're glad that he's here also. I want to acknowledge Dr. Ted Alejandre, who is the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools. Thank you for joining us this evening. And Dr. Judy White, who has retired as the Riverside County Superintendent of Schools as well. So we're really thankful for everybody who's come out this evening and really want to take an opportunity to appreciate the dignitaries who also put this into their schedule. Before we closed our school district for the COVID experience, we started the process of identifying a new superintendent for our school district. And we started that by asking all of you, asking you what you wanted to see in a superintendent, asking our community what you cared about in leadership qualities, and what you wanted our Board of Trustees to look for in a new superintendent for San Bernardino City Unified School District. That process then was halted when we went out into the COVID distance learning experience, and we were able to pick that back up again the first part of this year, but nothing that you said in the past was forgotten. In fact, it was very much at the forefront of our Board of Education's mind when they went through the process of searching for our new superintendent. And I am pleased to acknowledge that in March of this year, our board announced that we would bring Mr. Doc Irvin from Bakersfield Unified to San Bernardino City Unified as our new superintendent. So we're very pleased that he has come to join us, yes. But to tell you about that process and to do much more justice in the introduction of our new leader, I'd like to introduce our fearless leader, Dr. Gwendolyn Doughty Rogers, who is the president of the Board of Education for San Bernardino City Unified.
Good evening, everyone, and I appreciate, we appreciate Ginger so much. She is just a jewel that we have found, and she is keeping us all together. And I'm not going to be long, but I first again ditto everything that she said. I certainly want to again welcome you all to our wonderful Margaret Hill Community Room, and she is here with us. What an honor, right, to have a legacy to evolve into this legacy of this room. But I also just want to share with you a little bit tonight, as Ginger said. We know that during COVID, it halted a lot of things, and we had to shift, and we had to figure out some different directions. But one thing that we didn't halt is what we needed in the next leader that will lead us here for San Bernardino City Unified School District. We know we needed someone that would come in and love San Bernardino City Unified School District, but again move us to the next level of which we know we needed to go. Little did we know, we would find that in a young man named Doc Irvin, who has a lot of energy. Yeah, some of you are laughing because you know, you've seen it, a lot of energy, but a heart and a passion for children. And we fell in love with that instantly because we know that it truly is all about the children. And so as we are coming out of this thing that we call COVID, we are ready to jumpstart and to continue to move forward with those needs, needs that we have not identified yet, but knowing that they will be there and they will require passion in the classroom, and it will require people that will take their time and love on our students as we get back to where we will be going. We have adopted the fact that we're not looking for the normal, right? We're creating a new normal. And so we found that in this wonderful gentleman that I'm going to ask to come and take the stage, which is none other than Doc Irvin. Hailing all the way from Bakersfield.
Well, good evening. First of all, I want to say thank you for being here today. I really appreciate the reception. And I think most importantly, you know, obviously, they only gave me a few minutes because you know if I take the mic, I'm going to go on for a while. Yeah, thank you for that, but I won't. But I will say though that I do want to thank the Board of Education for the trust and confidence in me to lead the district, you know, in this next phase, especially coming out of this pandemic. We all know that we're going to have to be at the highest level of excellence, and we need to be, our students need to be, we need to be prepared. So when our students come back, and they are back currently, we want to make sure that every kid gets the support he or she needs to be successful, and that's critical. Also, I do want to thank the community, the entire community for their warm and wonderful welcome. And that's very important to me right now because ever since I've been here since March on and off, everyone has been very thoughtful, everyone has been very personable, and the most important thing is everyone has talked about how can we take the district to the next level on the other side of this pandemic? And most importantly, everyone I've spoken with have talked about what's good for kids. And many of you who know me, I only talk about what's good for kids, and that is something I'm impressed with. Before I get started really quickly, I want to introduce a couple of guests. I want to introduce my family because they really don't travel with the doctor, but they're here and they're here to support me, and I really appreciate it. My wife Lorena, she's right here, Lorena. And my three boys who decided to grace me with their presence today. I'm not sure if they're here to ask for money, but they're here because we know. Carlos, my oldest son, Carlos, Carlos, you got to stand up. Carlos is studying to be a teacher. Luis Armando. Luis is actually studying to be a teacher as well. And then Mario Armando. Not a teacher, but, and then Sophia, I do not see Sophia. Oh, there you are, Sophia. There you are, Sophia. And most importantly, I see a lot of my close friends here today, a lot of my friends who have known for many years. And I agree, I only have a small circle of friends, but I really appreciate some of my closest friends being here today. And very important, I see Fred here, I see Dan, thank you for coming, Judy White, many of you know Judy White for many years. And thank you, Judy, for being here. Glenn King, and many of you know Glenn King from Riverside, and he's the one who came up with the term hot mess. And so Glenn, thank you. And then obviously, my other colleagues and friends here. So I want to talk about a couple of things. Really, there's something that you've heard me say before, that the district really is poised for excellence. We're poised for excellence. Our executive leadership team have been having these conversations. We believe on the other side of this pandemic, ladies and gentlemen, we can take the district to the highest level of excellence. There's no reason why we can't. We are poised. The district is poised, and we're going to need everyone's support as we take on this new challenge. Also, there's a lot of great programs happening in the schools. I was at San Andreas and looking at their Environmental Science Academy. There's a lot of good things happening in the district, and our job is to see how do we replicate those best practices throughout this entire district. The other thing is the growth mindset. We know that when you're thinking about how to make every school a good school, because we all agree that every school should be a good school, yes or no? If you agree with that, clap twice. Okay, let's get in rhythm, clap twice. That's what I'm talking about, because every school should be a good school, because every district should be a good district. That means our goal is to make every school a good school, and that means every kid should be at the highest level of excellence, and we can never ask for anything less. And lastly, exceptional leaders. The district already has exceptional leaders within the district, teacher leaders, classified leaders, certificated leaders, principals. We have to tap into that talent, ladies and gentlemen, and take it to the next level. So as I come to a close here, in the next couple of months, my, the goal is for me to be on this listening and learning tour. It's going to be very important. That means I'm going to be doing a lot of meet and greets, and some of you in this room I'll be meeting with and greeting, but most importantly, listening and learning with the staff, to find out what's been doing, what are some of the things that are happening that are going well? What's working really well, but what are the areas of growth? At the end of that tour, we're going to really come back to the board, we're going to talk about what are those four to five goals that we're going to be thinking about as we go forward? What are those core priorities? What are those strategies? And most importantly, what are those metrics? Because in the end, ladies and gentlemen, we have to be prepared to make sure that every kid who leaves the district, leaves the district ready for post-secondary careers. We all agree on that, yes or no? If you agree, clap twice. Now, I want to close with this. And I want to say it from this perspective, that you all believe that I believe that you have to be at the highest level of excellence. You've heard me say this before, I'll say it again. There's no reason why we cannot be at the highest level of excellence. Every school should be at the highest level of excellence. Every employee should be at the highest level of excellence, parents. We have to be at the highest level of excellence, ladies and gentlemen. Excellent not meaning being the best, but how do we always get better for kids? Number two, high expectations. Now, you all know I never lower my expectations. My energy is high, but you've got to make sure that we all have high expectations because kids can't wait. We have to be at the highest level of excellence, but high expectation at all times, because we all believe that every kid can be at the highest level of excellence from day one to day 180, from pre-K, K, all the way to 12th grade, even through college. Every kid has to be, every individual should be at the highest level of excellence, and also high expectations. So I ask this of everyone in the room who work with me, and those of you who are partners, we can never lower our expectations, never, because that is not fair to kids. Also, I want to say this, ambassadors, whether we like it or not, we are educational ambassadors. Everyone in this room is an ambassador for education, no matter where we go in the world. That's why I tell people, don't put your stuff up on Facebook. Well, yeah, because you know what? Because we're ambassadors. We represent students. I carry myself, I always wear a suit and a tie. Someone called the other day, said, hey, Ms. Irvin, I'm going to get you a polo shirt. Nope, I'm going to be at the highest level of excellence at all time. I don't wear a polo shirt. I'm going to be in the suit and tie because I'm an educational ambassador for kids, and they need to see me as an educational ambassador. In this last piece, I will say this, and I know this is a cliche, and I know people hate when I say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. I believe that every decision we make has to be in the best interest of kids. Every decision that we make must be in the best interest of kids. Now, that's challenging at times, but I truly believe that every one of you in this room and everyone who work with kids truly try to make decisions in the best interest of kids, because they want kids to be successful, all of us do. So I'll close by saying I really appreciate you all coming out and taking the time, and I know that I'm always high energy, but as I close out this final chapter of my career, and I know my career is going to come to an end, I'm going to retire at some point, I want you to know this, that I will always make decisions good for kids. And I'll end by saying this, remember this, our actions, attitude, behaviors, and belief must reflect our commitment to do what's right for kids. I'll say that again, our actions, attitude, behaviors, and belief must always reflect our commitment to do what's right for kids, because we're in the business of kids. Yes or no? I didn't hear that, yes or no? All right, with that, I thank you, and give me two claps. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, thank you so much. There he is, our new superintendent. I think he has a little preach in him because he closed like three times, maybe four, and y'all know what I'm talking about. Was it four? It was, look at his kid said it was four. It was about four times. So last but certainly not least, I would like to introduce you. I get the pleasure to introduce you to those that are going to keep him accountable to everything that he said. So I will start with looking at the names, Mr. Danny Tillman. There he is in the house. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina. Dr. Barbara Flores. VP Dr. Scott Wyatt, there he is. Dr. Margaret Hill. And our newest board member, Ms. Myra Sabios. We will be taking the dais shortly, you'll get a chance to mingle a little bit again, but we thank you for coming out, all of the cabinet members, raise your hand, that's the team that will be working with our superintendent. To all of our cabinet members, they are here and they are the ones that are making the magic happen. And so again, we appreciate you, thank you for the family for being here and giving me an amen. I appreciate that, I appreciate that. All right, enjoy, and we'll be taking the dais in about 10 minutes. All right, we are going to call our meeting to order 2.1, and we will move to 2.2, and I'm going to ask if Dr. Funches, if you would lead us in the pledge tonight.
You stand for the flag salute?
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states.
2.3, approval of the agenda?
A moved.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. If there is no discussion, we will go ahead and take the vote on our screen. Yes, I'll go ahead and do a verbal vote. Ms. Sabios?
Hi.
Dr. Hill? Okay, and Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Flores? Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye. Motion carried, thank you. We are now moving to 2.4 inspirational message, and that will be Mr. Danny Tillman.
Thank you very much. And you know, I've been on the board for some time, and it's always been a pleasure to represent the constituents and ensure that we do what's best for students, as Mr. Irvin said earlier. And I want to start by apologizing to a lot of the parents in the district because the action was taken without the board's approval, where they cut the transportation by $1 million. And it didn't happen the way it's supposed to. You know, in the process of this, and me getting a phone call from a parent, and me looking into it, people, some of the staff apprised me of this bylaws, bylaw 9200 with limits to board members' authority, as if what I was saying in the inquiry was not allowed. But there is a policy, in this policy 3540 Transportation, that says, the superintendent, and I put it on your dais, board members, the superintendent or designated shall recommend to the board the most economical and appropriate means of providing transportation services. The key words there are shell, meaning that they come up with they think should happen, it comes to the board, it's agenda, and then the board either votes it up or votes it down. And this is what's important to remember, and we have new members of the cabinet, so I want to make them aware of this. This board has routinely gone against recommendations. I'll give you examples. The board kept and expanded our bilingual program, even though it was against a recommendation, where they recommended us to eliminate it because you didn't have to keep it anymore. And the state was going in a direction to say, get rid of bilingual. We said that's not what's best for our kids, so we kept it. We attempted and succeeded in passing a local bond measure against staff recommendations, said it wouldn't pass our first bond member, bond measure. We distributed laptops, the internet to district students and families without waiting for a task force or a committee to approve it. We kept our adult school going against the district budget committee during a budget time, and Dr. Flores remembered this, we were going through tough times, and the recommendation one line out was to save millions of dollars by getting rid of adult school. We chose not to, because we said for our community, it's important that we keep it. The board chooses to pay for all uniforms, equipment, transportation for all sports, including football cheer and band. We made that a priority. Didn't have to, but we have. The only thing a cheerleader has to do in our district to be a cheerleader is know the cheers and have spirit. But you don't have to have $1,000, or he doesn't have to have $1,000 to pay for the thing they stand on and the clothing, because we said, we're going to make sure that our students aren't limited based on where they come from and their social economical status. But that's the decision that the board made. We encourage, we encourage to use our facilities by youth support organizations, and sometimes waive the fees of our students if our students are participating, and that's important, because I understand a lot of your athletic directors and a lot of your principals feel like that site is there. But for me, I grew up in San Bernardino, and I know one thing, schools were a safe haven. On the weekend when I went and jumped the fence to play baseball or basketball or football at that school, it was something about that site, even on the weekend, that made it safe. And we as a board fight to open up those facilities because I know we're saving lives. We have brand-new sports stadiums with artificial turf after going against the recommendation of the staff. I don't know why we had an assistant superintendent who didn't want to have artificial turf, but we fought, and we fought until we got it. We pursue solar projects at many district sites. That was a board directive, because we were doing a different type of thing with saving energy, and solar wasn't part of the plan. But this board fought against it and said, no, we want solar now. We have registered nurses employed after rejecting the recommendation from the budget committee that we only had to hire health aides. We said, no, we're going to hire registered nurses because that's what's best for our kids. So we went against the recommendation of the budget committee. We provide transportation to students other than those that it is mandated for. We know that we only have to provide transportation for a majority of our special ed students, but a long time ago, the district entered into agreement with parents, and Abigail, you know this better than anybody, where if you went in a magnet program or you went to a different school, we said, if you want to have your kid in accelerated kindergarten program, you can be in there, and we'll provide this transportation. Why did we do that? Because we knew that we had parents that didn't have cars, didn't have transportation, and didn't have the wherewithal to get their kids to the site they wanted them at. But we spent the extra money to do it. We paid the full cost of crossing guards in our district. That's something the cities be paying for. Years ago, the city came to us and said, we're only going to pay for half of the crossing guards. And this board had to have a fight within itself, and we decided we were going to pay the half of the crossing guards, because we weren't going to have a district where its streets were unsafe. And then when the city went through bankrupt, we took up the mantle and paid the full cost of our crossing guards. And this is a, this is a prime example of what my concern is, the way the cut went for transportation. Because if a budget committee decides they can save me $1 million by getting rid of my crossing guards, remember, I'll say it again, if the budget committee decides they can save us $1 million by getting rid of my crossing guards, all I ask is that you agendaize it first and allow the board to decide if that's what the board wants to do, because it's the role of the board, and I will never back down from that. I will never apologize for it, because I know the role that we play in ensuring that our kids get the best chance at success. And the way the process is set up, the board has the authority. The superintendent is not the boss of the board. The board hires a superintendent to carry out our direction, and it works. So I, and with that, I want to say to all the employees, all the parents, all the kids, please do not become afraid to call me, because if you're working at a site, or you think about some other administrator might get upset, that's where the system breaks down. We have to have an open and transparent system, and it works best when we have that. And when the problem gets to me, then I accept that problem. And I'm only one board member, and that's why there was no need for them to give me the policy trying to dictate what board members can do, because I tell everyone the same thing. One board member, I'll give you a perfect example, the perfect example is this transportation. And they, and a parent told me they were cut, and the parent was literally in tears, because now they didn't know how to get their kid to school, and they have to talk to their supervisor about trying to work out a way to come in later, because those few minutes made that, made that much of a difference. And I said to them, I don't understand why there'd be a cut right now, because the district has a lot of one-time money. So I will do what I can to get three of the board members to go along with me to restore those cuts. It's been a challenge even to get it agendaized. It shouldn't be a challenge to make things right in our district. And I'll end by saying, this is a good thing. It's not inspirational for all, but it's inspirational for a lot of people to understand that their board works for them. And we have been successful the whole time I've been on the board because of that. And with that, I say thank you.
Thank you for your inspiration, Mr. Tillman. I think, did you have something you wanted to clarify, Dr. Flores?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tillman. We have been champions for our students, our parents, and you're correct, in terms of the board, you know, approving. Ms. Sabios and I had a meeting on the task force for transportation. We hadn't had a chance to report. We were not aware that the buses were cut. It was done last December, and apparently, apparently, we were not told about it. So Mr. Irvin inherited this problem, the issue, and we were not apprised of it. So it doesn't lie in his, how would you say, his realm. I think we can agendaize it so that we can speak about it, but we found out that, and Ms. Sabios, you might want to add too, that we don't even have the bus drivers if we even wanted to institute it.
Dr. Flores, I was told that, and I have-
Wait, I don't want to dialogue. I know, I know.
But I was just clarifying for you that we don't have the bus drivers, and apparently it was 144 kids that were impacted, and only three parents have raised issues regarding that. Well, that's what we found at the time, that was last, about a week ago or two weeks ago. So Ms. Sabios, would you like to clarify further?
Ms. Sabios, yes, go ahead.
I don't want to talk out of turn. No, absolutely, I think I agree with Mr. Tillman. I think that important decisions that are to be made need to be ran through the board. You know, they need to be agendaized, and we need to talk about those, and, you know, vote for or against. And I think it is an item that we do need to agendaize so that we can talk about it. Dr. Flores and myself did attend a task force. I don't know how much information I can share about that at this moment, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of, the school routes look like a spider web. They're all over the place, and that's costing the district a lot of money. And so if, I wasn't here at the time, you know, back when the cabinet, when cabinet did this, again, I'm not saying that that was the right thing to do. It should have been agendaized, and it should have been a board discussion around it, but that is the reason why we have a task force working on that ASAP. And so I encourage, there's only two of us there right now on the task force, we have capability for three board members. I encourage the rest of my peers that if they are interested in busing, to please join the task force, because we will be discussing very important information in terms of bus routing and such. And so that's it.
I wanted to add, I forgot something, that there were young children, babies, five-year-olds, kindergartners on the bus an hour and a half, and they had to transfer twice, and that's one way. And so that was an- And so that was an issue. And the reason we have the transportation task force is because of the law that was passed. We have to go to late start next, in high school, next year. And so we have to figure out, my colleagues, board members, we have to look at all the complexity that we have and look at, you know, certainly have updates and terms so that everybody's informed, all of us are informed. Because Mr. Tillman is correct. We are the ones that make the final decision. And we need input from parents. We need input, you know, from everybody so that we can make the decision that will be beneficial, like Mr. Flores said, that's best for our kids, everything that's-
I'm gonna go ahead and cut it. Thank you, because we, I do want everyone to know, Ms. Medina formally has already formalized and requested that this be agendized, number one. Number two, prior to this, why it wasn't agendized is because we found this out, just like many of you said. And my request was for Superintendent Urban to look into it, to see exactly what was going on. And we further found other things. But my greatest concern was if we can think back prior to COVID, is we also know that transportation was working towards what was going to happen in 2022, 2023 with late start. That's a whole nother piece that is going to impact. But with parents and board members, which is why we reached out and I was grateful for Ms. Sabios and Dr. Flores getting on the transportation committee. Because prior to that, Dr. Hill and I had went and we were a part of it and had seen it, and then COVID hit. And so again, like you said, there is room for more. But more importantly, we definitely, just like with late start, we want all of our community involved in that task force. So we're gonna wrap it up because I don't want it to get into a discussion because that's why it's been requested to have, be a future agenda item already. Mr. Tillman.
I can discuss the item because you're right, it's not agendized. But I will say this, because it's important for board members to understand this. If you sit on a committee, you don't make the final decision for the entire board.
No, that's not at all what they were gonna do.
So what has to happen in all these instances, after you have all your meetings, the recommendations have to come back to the full board-
You're absolutely right.
And be agendized, and then it's voted on.
You're absolutely right.
But it's never proper for someone to say that the committee or the task force decided we're gonna do it and therefore we're gonna cut millions of dollars or we're gonna add-
That wasn't the case.
It has to come back before then.
That wasn't the case. So yes, you're absolutely right. And that's why we will be requesting those board members to come back and bring us up. So I'm gonna close it, I gotta close it because it's an inspiration, so we need to stop. And thank you again for your input. We are going to move to 3.1, closed session, public comments. Ms. Cunningham, any?
No, we have none.
None, all right. So to our viewing audience that we have now, and we actually have our in-person audience, we're going to adjourn to closed session and we will be back as quickly as we can. Thank you for your patience. Okay, I think we are all back. Thank you so much for your patience. And we are going to resume our meeting. And we are at 4.1. High School Vice Principal, Human Services. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee. Zachary Peters, High School Vice Principal, San Gregonio High School, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined. It's been moved in second, and we will vote. Thank you, motion carried. 4.2, HR Class 521, 2022-01 ER. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of charges to suspend without pay for five days the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district, HR Class 21-22-01. It's been moved in second. Let's prepare to vote. All right, it should be on our screens. Thank you, motion carried. 4.3, HR Classified 21-22-01 ER. Be it resolved, all right, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the notice of recommendation for disciplinary actions and statement of charges to dismiss the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district, HR Class 21-22-2-ER. Is there a motion? It's been moved in second. Let us prepare to vote. Thank you, motion carried. We are now at public comments. This is the only time that the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, program services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. We have, I have two that I will call in person and then I know we have some either virtual or on the phone. The first person I am calling is Fatima Adame.
Hi, I made it in person, thank you.
Yes, you did.
Good evening and to the board, to the new superintendent who I haven't had yet the pleasure to meet. Welcome. And to the people who are here tonight, thank you so much for standing up for our kids. My name is, in fact, Fatima Cristerna Adame with the California Charter Schools Association. At your last meeting, I was unable to join you in person, but I sent an email regarding the matter at hand today. I'm here hoping that you will reconsider your membership in the San Bernardino County District Advocates for Better Schools, otherwise known as SANDAVs, a body according to the entity's bylaws whose purpose is to support the success of every child from cradle to career by influencing the adoption of thoughtful state and federal legislation. SANDAVs provides an opportunity for state and federal legislators or their designated staff to discuss and review issues affecting education in San Bernardino County. Over the last few years, our concerns have grown as this entity supports legislation in complete opposition to that purpose. They do not, in fact, support the success of every child. They purposely support and advocate for legislation in opposition to public charter school students and students with disabilities. They do so without any public input and maintain they do not have to abide by the Brown Act as they are neither a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(4). Your membership dues are paid for with student money, money entrusted to you by the community to support all our students. SANDAVs inability to support every child and its inability to act as a transparent body should be of concern to you. The district, along with County Superintendent of Schools, have their own lobbyists to support or oppose legislation. Purposefully advocating and testifying against charter school students with their support of bills like Assembly Bill 1505, among others, is the antithesis of what this particular board has always advocated, which is the support of all students under your care. To give you a quick example, I belong to the Inland Empire Advocates for Great Public Schools, which ironically sounds much like the San Bernardino County Advocates for Better Schools. Only my entity is a political action committee. We do exactly what SANDAVs does, only at a more local level. Our members participate with their own money and on their own time. SANDAVs members should do the same. Members of the San Bernardino County Board of Education have also questioned the entity since they subsidized part of the entity's budget, but have been given the runaround on the entity's purpose. It also provides huge conflicts of interest. For example, when a district takes a board position on a certain item, like Assembly Bill 1505, and their SANDAVs designee advocates for the opposite all the way to the state capitol. We hope you reconsider your membership to this entity and ask that either you demand SANDAVs act transparently in support of every child like their purpose states or cease to exist. The last thing we need to pay for with student money is one more lobbyist or one more lawyer. And this group does both. Should you have any further questions, you know how to get ahold of me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Fatima? I think there needs to be, there is a clarifying question for you.
I just need to clarify, so the school district, and maybe I haven't really looked into it. So it's SANDABS, S-A-N-
SANDABS, D-A-B-S. S-A-N-D-A-B-S.
And I guess the clarifying question is that, how long have we been paying if we do pay dues? All right, and thank you.
For a long time. The answer I've gotten is, that's the way we've always done it. That doesn't mean it's a great answer, but that's the way we've always heard.
Okay, wait, wait, don't leave. Okay, Mr. Tillman, and then Dr. Flores. Oh, okay, I thought your finger was, okay.
Fatima, we are members of SANDAVs and I think it's on our agenda today to approve-
Yes, Dr. Flores.
-our renewal of our-
Membership.
Yeah, so our renewal. It's a renewal.
Yeah, I would hope you not renew.
Pardon me?
My hope here is that you do not renew your membership.
Oh, you do not want us to renew?
Right.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay. Everyone good? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Roxana Cervantes. Welcome, Ms. Cervantes.
Thank you. Buenas tardes y bienvenidos al ciclo escolar 2021-2022.
Good evening, welcome to the 2021 and 2022 school year.
Para quienes no me conocen, mi nombre es Roxana Cervantes y soy madre de dos estudiantes del distrito escolar de San Bernardino.
For those who don't know me, I am Roxana Cervantes, mother of two students from this school district.
Primero que nada quiero agradecer la pronta respuesta recibida al correo electrónico que les envié el pasado julio 26 del 2021, donde se consideró una parada de autobús más cercana para mis hijos, sus estudiantes.
First of all, I appreciate the prompt response received to the email I sent you on July 26, 2021, which considered the closest bus stop for my children, your students.
Aprovecho la oportunidad para atraer a su atención algunos puntos que considero importantes sobre la seguridad y transportación de los estudiantes del distrito escolar.
I take this opportunity to bring to your attention some points that I consider important about the safety and transportation of the students of the school district.
Me encantaría conocer el procedimiento de cómo se seleccionan las rutas de transportación para los estudiantes. Pues las primeras propuestas han sido las escuelas cercanas a sus hogares. Pero en muchas ocasiones, los dejan expuestos a los peligros como el cruce de intersecciones, calles y avenidas principales, y de alto tráfico vehicular, sin semáforos o asistentes de cruce peatonal. Además-
Can you, can you, can you?
I would love to know the way how the transportation routes for students are selected, since they usually are the school near their homes. But on many occasions, this exposes them to dangers such as crossing intersections, streets, and main avenues.
Y de alto tráfico vehicular, sin semáforos o asistentes de cruce peatonal.
And where there's a lot of traffic and there is, without traffic lights or pedestrian cross guard.
Además que a la hora que llegan los estudiantes a sus paradas, los asistentes de cruce peatonal que ya hay en algunas intersecciones ya no están laborando.
In addition to the fact that by the time the students arrive to their cross, the guards are not working anymore.
A esto se le suma que muchos deberán cruzar más de una de estas intersecciones, calles o avenidas.
Also, that many will have to cross more than one of these intersections, streets, or main avenues.
También aprovecho para hoy extenderles la invitación a todos y cada uno de ustedes.
Today, I would also like the opportunity to expand the invitation to each and every one of you.
A que acompañemos a algún estudiante durante su ruta de regreso a casa después de un día de escuela.
To accompany a student during their route back home after their school day.
Tanto en el autobús, incluyendo el trasbordo que muchos de ellos tienen, como en el tramo por el que caminan hasta su destino final.
Both on the bus, including their transfer and the section they walk until it's their final destination.
Deseo resaltar que los autobuses, por los menos en los que mis hijos se transportan.
I would like to emphasize that the buses, at least on the ones my children are transported on-
No cuentan con aire acondicionado.
Do not have air conditioner.
Y ante las temperaturas que estamos experimentando-
And given the temperatures that we have experienced-
Y el tiempo que duran dentro de los autobuses-
And the time they spend inside the buses-
Que, por ejemplo, uno de mis hijos es más de una hora 15 minutos.
For example, for one of my children's, one hour and 15 minutes.
Exponen su salud a una deshidratación, golpe de calor, u otras afecciones a su misma salud.
Their health is exposed to dehydration, heat stroke, and other health conditions.
Lo cual me resulta completamente inhumano según mi perspectiva.
Which is completely inhumane in my perspective.
Así que dejo la invitación abierta. Solo déjenme saber el lugar, la fecha, y la hora con anticipación, y yo ahí estaré con ustedes para experimentarlo por nosotros mismos.
So I leave this invitation open. Just let me know the place, date, and time in advance so I will be there with you to experience for ourselves.
Gracias por el espacio y por su atención. Les repito, mi nombre es Roxana Cervantes y estoy aquí para servir a mi comunidad.
Thanks for this space and for your attention. I repeat, my name is Roxana Cervantes and I am here to serve my community.
Ms. Cervantes, hold on a sec. So Mr. Tillman, or Ms. Rosales Medina, Mr. Tillman, and then-
How long have your kids been riding the bus?
Este, contando, pues mi hijo desde kinder debería de haber tomado el autobús. Pero yo no permití que él fuera en el kinder en el autobús por lo mismo, porque había trasbordos y es mucho tiempo.
My son was supposed to start since kindergarten, but he didn't. I didn't let them because he has to transfer, so I didn't let him do that.
Él empezó en primer grado, ahora está en cuarto grado.
So he started when he was in first grade. He's in fourth grade now.
In fourth grade now? And the concern you have now about the way it's always been or any changes recently?
Siempre ha sido. De hecho, hace dos años, también envió una carta. Si gusta, se las puedo enviar de nueva cuenta, la copia, de que yo, lo mismo que hoy les estoy pidiendo, fue lo mismo que hace dos años. También expuse en un email para todos.
I've always had this concern. I sent a letter two years ago. I have it, if you want me to send it, I could do that. But I've been telling you guys this since all this time ago.
Y quiero hacer énfasis que esa es la razón por la que a los padres, a los que yo les comenté este asunto que están pasando por la misma situación, no están aquí. Porque saben que venimos y rara vez se nos escucha.
I just want to make emphasis that this is why some of the parents that have this concern, they're not here. Because we feel that sometimes we talk and you guys don't listen to us.
Permítame hacer la aclaración, rara vez se nos escucha. Se nos escucha, pero rara vez se resuelve la situación.
Let me clarify this. You guys listen to us, but you guys don't resolve anything.
And with that, we are gonna agenda transportation at our next meeting. So it'll be a good time to come in and listen and give us more input. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
And hold on, Ms. Rosales Medina?
I would like to comment that for the next meeting, we will be able to have the parents if they want to comment. And we will have it scheduled for transportation. But we would like if you could come back again. I know that would be very much, but for us to listen. And for you to be able, and with the other parents, to be able to listen if there is a type of, of queja or of concern. Is concern, I don't know how to say it in Spanish, but, uh, thank you for your comment.
So, before you answer, um, either, the translator, we need to translate what you just said.
She just wanted to emphasize that it is going to be on the agenda for next month.
Okay.
And just to tell the parents if they have any questions or concerns, they can come and ask their question or share their concern.
I will do everything possible to be here. I had to ask for permission in my job, a job outside of the city of San Bernardino, to be able to be here with my children. I had to ask for permission in my job. I will do everything possible in the next meeting.
We also have it live, and you can do it through Zoom if you can't, you can't come in person.
So I'm going to try my best. Today, I had to ask for the day off at work. I don't, I don't work here in San Bernardino, so I had to ask for permission to be here. So I'm going to try my best to be here. And the answer, the answer was also that they can see it online if they needed to see it.
And Dr. Floris, you have a clarifying question?
Buenas noches.
Frankly, I would like to thank you for coming. Uh, it's very important to hear from the parents. Uh, nosotros estamos disponibles a hacer decisiones para el bien de nuestros niños. We, the board, are here to do what's best for our children and to make sure that they are safe, que tengan su seguridad. Yo, francamente, estaba molestada a saber que hay niños que están en el camión una hora, más de una hora, y unos una hora y media, y que tienen que transferir dos veces. Eso para mí es, como mamá, es muy problemático. So I just came to realize that, um, there are some children that are on the bus an hour, sometimes an hour and a half one way. And I, as a mother, uh, you know, find that very problematic. But I assure you that once we talk about everything, it'll take some time to figure it out. Vamos a tomar tiempo para, tú sabes, resolverlo. Pero yo creo que cuando estamos aquí hablando claramente, escuchando, pero también resolviendo, ¿verdad?, el problema, que es bien para nuestros niños, yeah. So, next time, the next meeting will agendaize it. It's very important to hear from everybody. Uh, not just to hear from you, but to know that we consider it a, an issue, a problem to resolve. So, and we'll try to do it the best we can, uh, in terms of all the factors, alright? Todos los factores. Okay?
Okay. Les agradezco mucho su tiempo. Quiero hacer énfasis de que gracias al correo electrónico que yo envié, sí se les hizo el cambio de parada a mis hijos a una más cercana. Aún así tienen que cruzar avenidas, pero es una, es una parada más cercana.
I appreciate your time and thank you for listening to me. I do want to do emphasis that thanks for the, thanks to the email I sent you guys, we did change the stop that is closer to my house, but they still have to cross some main streets, and they still have to do, um, certain walking, but, um, thank you for that.
Y escucho entre mis vecinos, entre mis amigos, de que esta situación no es única. Hay otros padres que trabajan, que necesitan el servicio de transportación, inclusive que se les ha ofrecido el pase de autobús de la ciudad, de omnitrans. Yo como madre, no dejaría a mi hija de trece años viajar sola en un autobús de la ciudad. No la arriesgaría así. Entonces, ¿por qué hacen eso? Quizás sean niños un poco más grandes, de quince años, pero aún así están en riesgo. Yo como madre no lo permitiría, porque creo que tienen ese derecho para recibir el servicio de transportación justo.
I appreciate, and I do hear that there is more problems with more parents, more students, and I know that they have offered the, um, street, um, the city bus. But I would not let my child that is thirteen years old drive the city bus, because it's dangerous. And maybe other students are older, they're fifteen or older, but it's still dangerous for them, for them to be on the city bus.
Thank you so much for your comments, and we look forward to being a part of the transportation.
President, Ms. Cervantes, can I just encourage you, for the other parents who have had the changes, if you communicate with them that our meeting is going to be agendaized, this next meeting about transportation and busing, and to be here, because we have to hear from them. If they don't, then they'll think everything is great, and all the changes were wonderful. We can make it, we can, we can reverse the changes. That's what the role this board is. Thank you.
And, and board, we're going to finish this discussion. I know Ms. Cervantes has something to say, but we're gonna, because we're gonna, that's why it's being agendaized. So, yes, go ahead.
Oh, I just want to say, um, thank you. Muchas gracias por venir. Thank you for coming here today. Um, if you could send us the email that you did send two, three years ago, si nos puedes mandar el correo electrónico que mandaste, because what I'm hearing is that this is not a new issue. This is an issue that has been ongoing. So lo que estoy escuchando es que no es un, un problema nuevo, es un problema que ya ha estado recurriendo por varios años. Este, sí tenemos un comité que vamos a iniciar. We do have a committee that will be initiating exactly on transportation issues, because it is a big task. Um, un comité que vamos a estar empezando en transportación, porque es un, un problema muy grande que afecta muchas áreas del distrito, no más una. It affects other areas, not just transportation alone. So, um, I don't know if we're going to be opening it up to, um, you know, the committee, to other community members to, you know, come in and chime in. Um, but if we do do that, I urge you to, you come in and give your perspective and your concerns. Este, no sé si lo vamos a estar abriendo a la comunidad, pero si lo abrimos de motivo a que vengas y participes, así como los otros papás, para que puedan dar sus, you know, challenges or concerns que tengan, ¿verdad? So, thank you.
Yo amas tardar mañana mismo. Si puedo hoy, esta misma noche, yo se los envío ese, la copia de ese correo.
I will try to resend that email tonight or tomorrow.
Thank you. Alright, Mrs. Cunningham, I believe we have online?
Excuse me, yes, we do. Uh, the first one is Rita Fernandez Louf. If you're available, please unmute.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
No, she is too low.
We could hear you, but it's really low. Maybe you can higher the volume?
I am trying. What about now?
That's better. Yes, gotcha.
Okay. Thank you so much. Good evening. I am a member of the San Bernardino County Board of Education, representing over four hundred thousand residents of Area B, which includes the communities of Ranchukumanga, Upland, Ontario, Montclair, Mount Baldy, and portions of Fontana. Uh, I would like to express my concerns with the San Bernardino Advocates for Better Schools, Sandabs. Uh, it's an item on your agenda tonight. And I would urge you table this item until the board gets an opportunity to investigate this issue further. As recently as yesterday, during a county board meeting, I expressed my concern with the Sandabs group. I have a post-Sandabs budget, part of which is being funded by the San Bernardino County Board of Education. I have repeatedly asked for information about Sandabs and can never get a straight answer as to what type of organization they are. They are not a 501(c)(3). They do not appear to be registered as a political action committee. Their bylaws seem to be some sort of agreement between governmental agencies, but they quote-unquote "maintain" a web presence through the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools. What we do know is that Sandabs is extremely non-transparent. It does not allow the public to make comments and takes positions that are contrary to students and parents. And oftentimes, um, it is not even the position of the local school board. Um, despite being one funding mechanism for Sandabs, county board members are not eligible to be members of Sandabs, which I also have a big problem with. And I've heard from many parents of special education students in San Bernardino County who have told their stories about the vexations, litigation their children have been subjected to at the hands of attorneys representing entities like the West End Special Education Local Plan area. And the administrator of the WISELPA is currently on the Sandabs Executive Committee. Sandab supports legislative positions to add more funding to the broken SELPA system and against special education students. So for the reasons stated above, please consider, consider tabling the item until you have had an opportunity to look into these concerns. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Louf. And, um, Ms. Rosales Medina, are you, no, you're not sending me something, okay. Thank you. And our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Maria Arias. If you're available, please unmute.
Good afternoon, SBCUSD Board members and public. This is Mrs. Sider of the YouTube movement, Every Student Successful, More Education, Less Litigation, Special Education, Children Matter. I am here today to advocate for the special needs community and children. I very much like the statement that the superintendent made today. Every decision we make must be in the best interest of the kids. And the next statement was, "Our actions, attitude, and beliefs must always reflect the benefit of our kids." I love those two statements, and I will ask that you all share the same sentiment, because we must always make decisions that are in the best interest of our kids. And because of that, I too, I'm going to ask that you table, or you say, or vote no on Agenda Item 11.5, because I too agree that Sandabs, it's not working in a very transparent way. I have visited their website, and I have tried to make a comment, and I have not been allowed. I have also listened to their meetings, and they seem to be against special education children. Many times, I have heard them make decisions that totally are against special needs children. As a parent of three special needs children, I totally, uh, I am against Sandabs and how they behave. Another thing that I don't like is that they have a purpose. They are funded by each, I guess, district. And yet, they take all their decisions to a higher level, to sacramental. And yet, they don't allow parent participation. That is very disturbing, because they say they advocating, they do everything on the interest, interest of our children, yet that doesn't seem to happen. Um, I can testify that most districts are litigating against special education children. One of my children was sued by our district on April 3, 2020, showing that districts are allowing, um, litigation to occur at the expense of the taxpayers. And that is one of the reasons why my family and I created the YouTube movement. We document every single decision made by our district. We also document local districts and all the decisions that are made against our children. So we, as taxpayers and parents of special needs children, request more education, less litigation, and we always say, "Special education, children matter." So, once again, I also ask for you to delay the vote on 11.5 to agree to continue with the Sandabs. Um, and I also request that you always look for the good and the benefit for every single child within your district. I thank you very much for this opportunity to provide public comment today. And my son, Samuel, is next, and he will be, also be providing the comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, next speaker?
That would be Samuel. Samuel, if you'd like to speak now?
Yes. Good afternoon, SBCUSD Board members and public. This is Samuel, a sixth grade student in San Bernardino County. I'm here to advocate for special needs children. On Agenda 11.15, I'm here today to ask you to vote no on 11.15. Why? You ask, because Sand, Sand, Sandabs does not allow public participation. Members meet in cer- cer- secrecy, discuss issues, and vote on items. Sometimes go against special needs children. Another note, please ensure your budget is always used for education, not litigation. My family and I created the YouTube movement, Every Student Successful, More Education, Less Litigation, Special Education, Children Matter. Thank you for your time, Samuel Arias.
Thank you. Next speaker? Our next speaker is Maria Lopez. Please unmute now.
Buenas tardes. Sí, señora María, si solamente puede hablar en pausas, por favor? ¿Me escuchan?
Señora López?
Te escuchamos.
The translator is on, correct?
Yes, I'm here.
Disculpe, si me escuchan?
Te escuchamos.
Señora López, ¿me escucha usted? Ah, sí, yeah. Sí, si puede hablar en pausas, por favor, para que yo le pueda interpretar. Está bien. Buenas tardes a todos. Uh, mi nombre es María Ortiz, María Ortiz, María López. Uh, en primer lugar quiero dar las gracias por todo el trabajo que ustedes hacen, por el bien de nuestros hijos en las escuelas.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is María López. First of all, I would like to thank all of you for all the work that you do on behalf of our children.
Soy mamá de cuatro estudiantes del distrito escolar de San Bernardino.
I am a mother of four students at the San Bernardino School District.
Este, y este, en primer lugar quiero darle las gracias por, um, la comida que se dio por parte del distrito escolar a, a todos los papás en este, en estos tiempos que pasamos, y hasta ahorita. Gracias por los alimentos que nos han dado para poder sostener a nuestra familia.
And first of all, I would like to thank you for all the food that was given out to all the families in need during this difficult time, and the food that we continue receiving up to, up to today.
Así es, estoy muy agradecida por eso. Gracias por todo el esfuerzo que han estado haciendo en este, en este aspecto.
And I'm really grateful for all the effort you have been doing, all the work that you've been doing in this aspect.
Este, quiero llamar a su atención en esta, en este día, a la situación de las, um, la, las vacunas para nuestros hijos. Eh, yo como papá de, mamá de cuatro niños, este, honestamente, no estoy de acuerdo con eso. Y yo llamo para darles a, a conocer y levantar la voz, no solo por mí, sino por otros papás que tampoco están de acuerdo.
And I would like to bring to your attention the situation about the vaccine. As a mother of four children, I am, I do not agree with this.
Y tal vez represento muchos papás que por miedo no hablan y no dicen nada al respecto.
And maybe I represent a lot of other parents who, because of fear, do not speak up or don't say anything about this.
Me gustaría que siempre la mantuvieran de manera, de manera voluntaria.
I would like for this always to be voluntary.
Agradezco la hoja, uh, yo miré una hoja que tiene la, la escuela Royal Valley High School, donde dice que, que es, um, para los maestros que no, no están de acuerdo tampoco con la vacuna, dice, pues que es una información privada de salud de los maestros, y es algo que valoro mucho, que la escuela puso eso para defender a los maestros. Y de igual manera, me gustaría que defendieran a, a todos los niños y los papás del- Y de igual manera, me gustaría que defendieran a, a todos los niños y los papás del Distrito Escolar, y que se maneje de manera voluntaria.
I would like to say that I appreciate the sheet that our Royal Valley High School has in support of the teachers who do not agree with this and are not okay with this. And I would like for this to be a voluntary matter.
Solamente es eso, hacerles saber que no estamos de acuerdo y que no soy la única mamá que no estoy de acuerdo, está de acuerdo. Hay varios papás, pero que por miedo no dicen nada, a lo cual yo voy a trabajar para formar un grupo en, en defensa de nuestros niños.
Perdón, señora López, ¿qué es lo que no está de acuerdo? No entendí.
Ahm. Lo que estoy diciendo es que no se quiera vacunar a los niños de manera obligatoria, sino siempre que se maneje de manera voluntaria.
Okay, so as a parent, I just want to say that I want this to be voluntary. And then I asked what she was speaking about, because I didn't really understand what it was she was not agreeing with. And what she replied is that she does not agree that children are forced to be vaccinated, that this should be voluntary.
Mi preocupación es porque miré un post en Facebook, oye, bueno, en la página del, del Distrito Escolar donde dice que si uno de mis hijos amanecía con gripa, tos, no puede ir a la escuela porque tiene tos, pero automáticamente la escuela lo va a registrar como un caso de COVID-19 en casa. ¿Por qué va a ser eso? Porque tienen ya, ya la autoridad de, de diagnosticar a mis hijos con el virus, ya desapareció la gripa, porque tienen que diagnosticar a mis hijos con el virus automáticamente porque tienen tos.
So my concern is that I saw a post on Facebook and also on the district website that if my child has a flu or the cough, that they are automatically diagnosed as COVID. Why is this the case? If they have the flu or a cough, then why are they automatically diagnosed as COVID?
Eso solamente es mi preocupación y hacerla saber a ustedes.
That's my concern, and I just wanted to let you know.
Se me hace una forma de coacción.
I, I feel like this is coercion.
Gracias por su tiempo y buenas tardes a todos.
Thank you for your time and good afternoon.
And, and let her know, there's going to be a question, but we do want to let her know that someone will be reaching out to her, because we do have her information, so that we can explain to her further about the roadmap and what our, our protocols are currently in place.
Señora López, solamente para decirle que alguien se va a poner en contacto con usted para explicarle sobre el protocolo que hay. Tenemos su información, así que alguien se pondrá en contacto con usted.
Está bien, gracias.
Thank you.
And Ms. Abayos.
Y hay una pregunta.
Yeah, no, that was it. If we can make sure that we get in contact, we.
Because we have, we do have the information on record.
Yeah, because I think that there's.
Más quería clarificar, I just wanted to clarify with the parent. Muchas gracias por su comentario, primeramente. First, I want to say thank you for your comment, but I also want to make sure that we clarify, because I know people are listening online and could receive this information as accurate. And so if we can, maybe a quick snippet, can someone just say that?
Well, the quick version is we're not requiring that as of now.
Yeah, that's what I want to make sure that.
We are not requiring, and we were trying to also make sure she was referring to the vaccine and not T-DAP or something else that is a requirement, but we are not requiring the vaccination for our students at this time.
Solamente para aclarar, este, por las personas que están escuchando virtualmente, una aclaración, esto no es algo que se está requiriendo. El requisito no es de la vacuna de COVID. Quiere asegurarse que no sea como T-DAP o este otro tipo de vacuna, pero para aclarar, esto no es algo que está requerido.
If I, if I may.
Okay.
Ms. Jones.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure, because other people are listening also. We have protocol that suggests if you have symptoms that may be COVID, that we're asking students and staff and everyone, even at my job, you would self-quarantine until you get tested. But that's loss of taste and smell is a good example, or fever or chills. But if you have those type of symptoms, we're not declaring that you have COVID. We're just suggesting that if you have those symptoms, you should quarantine until you test negative.
Ah, sí, solamente para aclarar, este, lo que tenemos es que si tiene síntomas de COVID, lo que están sugiriendo es que haga una cuarentena, solamente hasta asegurarse que no sea COVID, como la pérdida de olor, como la pérdida de sabor, este tipo de síntomas.
Gracias.
And it's also due to exposure, correct? They don't have to have the symptoms. If they have been exposed to somebody that has tested positive, they are being asked to quarantine. And so we just want to make sure that that information is clear, because we are not diagnosing anybody, you know, based on close contact with somebody with COVID.
Y también solamente para aclarar que es también si ha sido expuesta a alguien con COVID, eso también que hagan cuarentena, pero es nada más necesitamos aclarar que es por exposición.
And I think it's important.
Sí, así es. No cae automáticamente, ¿verdad?
Sí, no automáticamente.
Right, and I think it's important to realize our website is sbcusd.com.
Y es bueno también aclarar que el sitio web es sbcusd.com.
Sí, sí, yo lo sigo en el Facebook.
I follow you on Facebook.
Okay, we're going to send something out, and next time we send out our Parent Square message, we'll work with Eric Bateer and his team, and we'll get a message out for clarity. So thank you.
Vamos a trabajar en Parent Square para mandar algo para aclarar.
Está bien, gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buen, gracias, buenas tardes.
Next speaker. Okay, our next speaker is Alfredo Aguero. Please unmute.
Mr. Aguero, Aguero, are you there?
Yes. ¿Me escuchan?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, first of all, I, I, I'm going to give my comments in Spanish, and I want to ask for a translator to give it in English. And the reason is because my Hispanic community has to, to know and understand what happened in this meeting.
Okay, we, our translator is ready.
Buenos tardes a todos los presentes y personas conectados a esta reunión vía Zoom o teleconferencia.
Good afternoon and welcome to everybody on this meeting via Zoom or teleconference.
Mi nombre es Alfredo Aguero, soy organizador comunitario en el área de educación especial en Inland Empire.
My name is Alfredo Aguero. I am an organizer in the area of special education in the Inland Empire.
Primeramente, quiero pedir a los miembros de la mesa directiva que tengan, que detengan sus membresías con San Bernardino County District Advocates for Better Schools known as SAMDAS.
First of all, I would like to ask all the board members to stop the renewal of the membership with SAMDAS.
Que aparece en el artículo 11.5 de la agenda de hoy.
That's on Article 11.5 in today's agenda.
Hasta que los miembros de la Mesa Directiva de San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools lo revise.
Until the members of the San Bernardino School Board of County of Schools look it over.
Pues algunos supervisores de los distritos escolares tienen problemas con el Comité de SANDAP, pues no es muy transparente en lo que están haciendo.
Because some of the supervisors have some problems with SAMDAS, because they're not very transparent in what they're doing.
También quiero comentar que padres con hijos en educación especial están teniendo problemas con administradores del Departamento de SELPA.
I would also like to add that some of the students of, some of the parents of the students in special education are having some problems with the directors of SELPA.
Uno de ellos es la señora Uvona Landi, quien sin hacer evaluaciones a los estudiantes están haciendo cambios en los ADPs de ellos.
One of those is Dr. Landi, who without doing evaluations are having, are making changes in some of their students' IPs.
Tal es el caso de la señora Martha Lovera, quien me pidió que la apoyara, pues el aparecer nadie aquí en el Distrito Escolar está haciendo nada para dar solución a sus problemas.
Such is the case of Martha Lovera, who seems like nobody at the district is taking the time to care for her problems.
Y San Martha Lovera.
Martha Lovera.
La señora Landi, el señor Portes, haciendo uso del poder que tienen ella y su posición de la director, como directora del SELPA, intimidaron y amenazaron a la señora Lovera, que de no firmar el reporte de la IP cambiarían su hijo a nivel leve moderado.
Mr. Portes and Dr. Landi, making use of her position as the director of SELPA, intimidated and threatened Ms. Lovera, that if she didn't sign the IP, then they would do, they would put her, put her son in regular, special, or normal education, regular education, sorry.
Les hago la aclaración que la señora Lovera me autorizó para hablar de su caso aquí en esta reunión.
I would like to clarify that Ms. Lovera gave me permission to talk about her case in this meeting.
Esto no es nuevo para mí, pues anteriormente ya es, ya tuve experiencias similares con el Departamento de Educación Especial de San Bernardino.
This is nothing new for me, since I've already had such experiences with the San Bernardino School District Special Education Department.
Lo que están haciendo en este caso es una violación a los derechos del estudiante.
What they are doing in this case is a violation to the rights of the student.
Pues no se puede hacer ningún cambio, el estudiante no es evaluado correctamente antes de poder hacer cualquier cambio en su, en su educación.
Since no changes can be done if the student is not evaluated before.
Existen más casos como este, y por esa razón quiero pedir que se ponga atención en cómo se está trabajando en el Departamento de Educación Especial.
There are more cases like this, and this is why I would like to call your attention to how the Special Education Department is being handled.
Como lo he dicho antes y lo volveré a repetir.
Like I've said this before and I'll say it again.
Las leyes fueron escritas para ser violadas.
The laws were written to be violated.
Sí, violadas por las personas e instituciones que creen tener el poder de hacerlo.
Yes, violated, but those people and institutions who think they have the right to do so.
Pero escritas para ser obedecidas por nosotros, los ciudadanos comunes.
But written for us citizens to obey.
Gracias por todo y espero que puedan apoyar a la señora Lovera.
Thank you for everything, and I hope that you support Ms. Lovera in everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
It's the last of the virtual, you have one left.
I have one last in person, and that is Mr. Robert Porter.
In the meantime, I want to say thank you to the translator. She has done amazing in making sure that she translates.
Absolutely, and I was going to mention that in my comments, but we definitely want to call upon her to, to help us as well, so you don't have to carry on that burden. Thank you. Mr. Porter, welcome. Your, the mic, is it, is on or up?
I'm not here to scold you. I'm just here to kind of give you a little history lesson about San Bernardino. I'm not here to put injunction on you, which I could. I'm not going to, because I think you all, some of you didn't make this decision, but the destruction of the church on Seventh and E is, it's, it's pretty awful. I mean, San Bernardino, and a lot of you know this very well, doesn't have a lot of history left. And we've had our buildings torn down in front of us, and to have the school district do it, 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 it kind of like a little shot in the heart, because you all are responsible for teaching our kids our history. I understand that we need a new school police station. I know, I understand we need new family resource center and things like that. San Bernardino needs new things, but we also need to protect our history. And the reason we need to protect our history is because some of these things are unique. And, and if, if the few, if about 200 years from now that church was still there, you know, it'd be, you know, 300 years old. And it, it, our history has potential to teach and show our kids that we do care about the past, and San Bernardino has a long history, one of the oldest settlements on the whole west coast of the United States of America. And to just destroy our history, to put something else in its place, isn't always the best way, but I just wanted to read to you a little bit about the history of the church. And the Church of, the Church of Christ Scientist San Bernardino, building on 736 Northeast Street, was originally constructed as a First Church of Christ Scientist San Bernardino. Mary Baker Eddy was born and bound in New Hampshire in 1821. Plagued by poor health throughout her life, their desire for good health led her to study alternative healing methods. Following her recovery from an accident in 1866, Eddy dedicated her life to developing healing skills, teaching, and writing. Eddy acquired students and followers, and her methods gained popularity throughout the 1870s, culminating in the foundation of the First Church of Christ Scientist in 1879. The Christian Science Church of San Bernardino was organized in December 3, 1893. Originally, those interested in Christian Science met in private homes, but buildings were eventually moved and to a rented public hall. And then a number of church members and attendees got together and built the church in 1916. So I'm like grassroots team, like the, the stuff that, that we love to happen here in our city. You know, starting from a small group, building up bigger, 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 until you end up with your own building. Now, it's good history to protect. I just hope that you in the future, you do more community outreach. This project, I know was in under the, the current leadership, but it's over two years old, but it kind of went under the radar, and that's not how the historians in San Bernardino, which if you look at some of those posts, it's bad. So please, team, you know, in the future, please protect our history.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Good to see you. And also, have you spoken with anyone with our district? Is anyone just a conversation with you? Okay, so we, our superintendent and or someone from the staff, we have your information, and we can reach out to you first. All right, thank you. Good to see you. I turned off my, you know, I went mute on myself. All right, Ms. Cunningham, just want to make sure no one else is on the line. I don't have any more blue slips. All right, we will then move on to 6.1, our public hearing and approval of the Memorandum of Understanding Reopening in Person for the 2021-2022 school year between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and the San Bernardino Teachers Association. I am opening up the public hearing. Are there any? Okay.
Yes, we have a virtual. Ashley B. De Saucala, if you could please unmute.
Evening, President Dr. Rogers.
Turn up a little. Let's see. Try it again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you clear.
Good evening, President Dr. Rogers, Superintendent Irvin, members of the board and cabinet. I'm Ashley B. De Saucala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. SBT and the district have worked quickly and collaboratively, and were able to negotiate an agreement on the COVID safety parameters for the reopening of our 2021-2022 school year for in-person learning. We urge your approval of this memorandum of understanding, so we can continue to implement these safety measures now that we have returned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Ms. Cunningham? All right, I'm going to close the hearing. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts the Memorandum of Understanding Reopening in Person Learning for the 2021-2020 school year between the San Bernardino Teachers Association and the San Bernardino City Unified School District.
Move.
All right, it's been moved in second. We will prepare to vote. All right, motion carried. Thank you so much. We're moving to 7.0, Reports by Union Organizations, beginning with 7.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association. Is there, is Ms. Bede Saucala coming back on? Okay. All right, there she is. Mrs. Bede Saucala, are you speaking? We can see you, but we have, we don't hear you.
Mrs. Beda Saucala, are you speaking? We can see you, but we have, we don't hear you. Uh, it's, it looks like we're having some technology. She left the call? Okay. We will move to 7.2, California School Employees Association. Is there a representative tonight? On the line or in person? No. All right, 7.3, Communication Workers of America. Is there someone on the line or in person tonight? Let's see, no. 7.4, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. Is there someone on the line or in person tonight? Hello, welcome.
All right. Good evening, Board President, Doctor Rogers.
Good evening.
Board members, Superintendent Irvin and Cabinet. My name is Daniel Adias. I'm the president for the San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. And today I'm just coming to, first and foremost, thank you guys for all the hard work that you guys are doing. Doctor, um, Rogers, Superintendent Irvin, uh, getting the kids back to school. And tonight I just wanna just highlight, uh, some of the things that our officers are doing, some of the great work that they're doing. Uh, we continue to go out there and patrol at night, make sure that, you know, our schools are safe and there, unfortunately, there is a lot of homeless people that are living on our campuses, but, you know, we're working diligently to make sure that we get them the resources that they need, to get them the appropriate housing or the resources that they may need to, to, you know, get, go somewhere else. Um, also, um, during the day, we're making sure that we're hitting their safe routes. Just within this past, I wanna say, two months, we've been able to apprehend, uh, some sex offenders that were actually camping out at some of our elementary schools. And just, this is day two and kudos to everybody because it's been so successful. But just in the outskirts, we've, just today, I think we had two indecent exposures at our local elementary schools. Um, and I just wanna take this moment just to really, you know, highlight our officers and the amazing work that they're doing day in and day out. Uh, we also have an officer that's part of our human trafficking task force. He's, um, reported back and he's been able to rescue, I think, within the last two months, two minors that were being trafficked out here in San Bernardino. So, um, kudos to Officer Sandoval as he's doing the work and representing the San Bernardino School District, making sure that, you know, we're, we're out there, making sure that we're, you know, getting these people that are doing this to our, to our youth. Um, I also wanna just thank, um, everybody, SBTA, CSEA, I think we've all come together, our administration staff to, to work hard to, to get our kids back into school. And I'm recently assigned to Arroyo Valley High School and it was just great. It was just great to interact with our students and, um, for them to see us and, and just have that interaction with them. It was, you know, I missed it. So, um, it was really good. I also wanna take the time to highlight our cadet program and our explorer program. If there's parents out there that, that, um, want their kids in a good program, our explorer program, we're currently recruiting. I'm sad to say that we've lost about 10 cadets, but that's not becau, that's because they've been able to promote out and they're currently working for the San Bernardino Sheriff's Department, Riverside Sheriff's Department, California Highway Patrol. Within our district, we have them, um, working as campus security officers, dispatch, and also police officers. So if you guys know youth that are currently going to college and that they're interested in a career in law enforcement, please send them our way. Um, and on my end, it's an honor. Like Chief says, um, he always tells us a quote, he's gone, but, uh, he always tells us a quote by Nelson Mandela saying that, you know, the most powerful weapon known to man is education. And with education, you can change the world. And it's an honor for us. I know we're shorthanded right now, but it is an honor for us to, to make sure we're safeguarding that. And we're, you know, making sure that we're creating a safe environment for our students, for our staff, and also for our community members. So, thank you all and God bless you guys.
Thank you. And before you leave, I just wanna say congratulations to you all. I know Doctor Wyatt was front and center in the picture that I saw, but you all were recognized, um, through San Bernardino County just for your work and, and efforts that you guys are always out there supporting. And our schools look wonderful. We could imagine what they could have looked like during a time when there was a lull and no kids on the campus, but you guys maintained them and it's not, they're all graffitied and torn up. And I just wanna personally say that we do recognize you and we appreciate you. And I just seen that others, um, gave the entire team a shout out, so we wanna say that to you as well. So, thank you. Thank you all. All right, we are now at 8.0, reports and presentations, 8.1.
President Rogers.
Oh, I am sorry, Aunt, she's back. There you are.
Good evening again, President Rogers. I'm Ashley B. De Saucala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, speaking to you tonight on behalf of our 3,000 members. First, I wanna take a moment to acknowledge all of our SBTA educators who after 16 months of distance learning returned to all of our school campuses last week and welcomed our students into their classrooms once again yesterday. On the second day of instruction, I've heard that our educators and students are excited to be back and we are settling into the groove of school. We know there will still be challenges as we continue to navigate through the coming weeks and we must continue to be vigilant as this pandemic is far from over. The Delta variant is now prevalent throughout the United States and is showing to be much more contagious than previous strains, which continues to put our school community at risk, especially when our youngest clients are still not able to access the vaccine. It remains imperative we continue to follow the agreed-upon safety mitigation strategies which are in our MOU that you approved tonight. Thank you. Including universal mask wearing, ventilation, sanitizing and hand washing, as well as continue to, to look at our local context, our COVID community transmission rates and our current scientific knowledge and guidance from the California Department of Public Health that we have in order to continue to make informed decisions as this board has done since the beginning of the pandemic. And we must continue to do this in order to keep our students, staff and our community safe so we can continue in in-person learning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming back on. Okay, I think we got those off, right, Ms. Cunningham? Okay, thank you. 8.1, Better Together, Welcome Home Celebration.
Go ahead and cue it up. So, um, President Rogers, Doctor Wyatt, Superintendent Irving, Board and Community and Cabinet, we are just excited to welcome our scholars and our staff back. And so we put a little montage together, just a quick little video of the first day of school, just to give you a snapshot of what this looked like. We, um, all of Cabinet was out yesterday. We were out today. We're just out and about greeting our staff, making sure that everybody knows, um, how excited we are to have both our children and everybody back on campus. And school feels like it should. So with that, if we can play the video, please. So, you know, our roadmap, um, theme is Better Together, Welcome Home. You can see that, that was just a couple of our schools welcoming our scholars back. Really wanna commend our staff for just making a very festive environment. We asked them to, to do that for our scholars and they went above and beyond. Uh, music, balloons, just high fives. There was, of course, um, some hiccups the first day, but not many for a district that is as large as ours. So 72 schools, um, hit and miss a little bit with our temperature checks, but the principals do what they always do. They reviewed what was going on with their staff. They improved upon it. And so if you talk with them today, they said their systems were running nice and smooth. I'll say I started my day at Chavez Middle School yesterday. Very smooth running school with lots of media there to greet the scholars. So, thank you for just those few minutes to celebrate our schools being open to our students and thank you for the ongoing support.
Mister Tillman?
Yes, and I just wanna congratulate the superintendent and assistant suits and deputy suits and all district staff on the opening. I've talked to some parents. Their kids are very excited. I think you did a wonderful job on the, um, communication piece of it. I saw where, uh, Mister Irvin was at, uh, Pacuma, it was going to 15 other schools in the article. And then the pieces they did at Samdino High School in Cajon and just having the teachers talk there, I think was excellent. It really set the tone for the start of the school year. So, just wanna commend everybody on a job well done.
Um, I also would like to commend, uh, Mister Irvin and, uh, all the cabinet, all the administrators, all our teachers. Um, I've heard nothing but great things, uh, today. Parents texting. Uh, my daughter is a teacher and reported that it was a great opening at Indian Springs and so kids are happy to be back. Uh, they're still cautious though. They're hoping that we continue to stay open, but, uh, they know that if it is, if it does get bad, uh, you know, we will take the appropriate safety precautions, uh, because this board and I know our cabinet and our superintendent wants everybody to be safe. And so, uh, we commend you on your leadership. Uh, we're very happy, well, I'm very happy. I think the rest of the board is too. And so, um, we look forward to a great year. I told Mister Irvin, I gotta think of a new adjective besides Energizer Bunny because he is beyond the Energizer Bunny. And just appreciate your, your wisdom, your, 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 um, leadership, your energy. Uh, you even get me energized, which is great. And so, um, we look forward to a great year. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. And now we're going to have our 8.2, Return to Work update. Welcome, Doctor Funches.
Good evening, Doctor Rogers. Vice President, Doctor Wyatt. Board. Mister Irvin. Community. I too am very excited. It was, it was a, it was a very emotional day yesterday when we got a chance to, uh, see all of our scholars in action, their parents, uh, as we visited our school sites. This is an historic, this is a historic moment, uh, a historic undertaking to bring all of our scholars back in this large district and do it in a safe manner. I do have Mister Eric Vatier here with me tonight as we'll give you an update on our return to work and answer some of the questions that you posed the last time I was here about the safety protocols and the leave process and such. So, I'll get started, but I did not wanna get started without thanking you, Board, for your tireless efforts, uh, throughout this pandemic, uh, and your direction for keeping us safe. Uh, Superintendent, uh, Doc Irvin and his energy, uh, coming on board. And then our cabinet as well, excellent work. And I'll, I'd also like to point out our certificated and classified staff out there doing an amazing job as we visited our schools yesterday and our school site leaders, principals, vice principals. Just amazing work. Our guest educators as well joined us and they've been joining us in this effort. And then our student interns, student interns out there as well. So I wanted to thank, wanted to say thank you as we get started. But as you know, as I spoke to you the last time that we were here, and I'll remind you of, of the safety protocols or the mitigation strategies, next slide, please. That we will continue to, um, press forward and not get lax on. As you see in front of you, the face coverings that you have here tonight, the air ventilation systems, the constant and consistent, uh, focus on sanitizing and disinfecting, like we have our custodian here tonight as well. Uh, the prevention and hygiene, uh, hand sanitize, hand sanitization and the screening and testing, the focus on screening and testing, and then also the contact tracing as well. And then next slide, I'll remind you of the process for our employees that we've continually given them information on. Meaning if you feel, uh, sick or if you've been exposed or infected with coronavirus, you are to self-quarantine, notify your supervisor, report to COVID cases. Even if you feel like you've been exposed, you can report to COVID cases. And then we take it from there with the contact tracing for our employees. We will continue to do, to do that in con, in conjunction with or collaboration with AMLLC as well. And we'll keep our employees safe from that aspect. Uh, that is something that we are highly, highly encouraging on a daily basis to make sure that we self-monitor and keep ourselves safe as well as others around us. Next slide, please. And then here are the four bullet points or four talking points that I wanted to update you on, on some of the questions that you had for me the last time that I was here. We discussed briefly the SB 95 leave and how that plays into work-related COVID, uh, exposure. And so if you look at the first bullet point, it does provide or an explanation that all work-related COVID-19 employee isolation or quarantine will be processed using the SB 95 leave or district-provided leave. And so the second part of that sentence, employees will not be required to use their own sick leave for work-related COVID-19, uh, isolation or quarantine. So that addresses the concern that someone will run out of SB 95 leave, uh, if they've been quarantined twice. We'll make sure that we take care of our employees. Uh, the next bullet point, employees exposed to COVID-19 will be notified through contact tracing. I think we've explained that. We'll continue to do that. And then here, here are the developments from, uh, the protocols that we follow for the California Department of Public Health, sorry. Fully vaccinated employees exposed to COVID-19 but showed no symptoms will not have to immediately quarantine, but we will monitor them for symptoms over a 14-day period. And then finally, unvaccinated employees, and we find that out through the contact tracing process. Uh, if they're exposed to COVID-19, they will have to quarantine for a period of 10 days and will be requested to test. And I'll show two, uh, pictographs that explains it a little bit further. And then we'll go from there. Next slide, please. So this is the process, if you can see, for vaccinated employees. Should our employees come into contact with or be exposed to the COVID-19 virus through the contact tracing process? Here's the, the determining next steps. So you see at the top of the pictograph, COVID-19 symptoms. On the left side, yes, if a vaccinated employee is demonstrating symptoms, he or she, uh, have been confirmed or exposed to a confirmed case. If you look at the bottom left, they have to isolate 10 days and also test. That means they're exhibiting symptoms and they've been exposed to a positive case. If they are on the, on the right side, I apologize, on the right side of that pictograph as well. If they do not have symptoms, but they've been exposed, we just quarantine, uh, and we monitor for symptoms for 14 days. This is for the vaccinated employee, correct? Next slide. And then unvaccinated employees from the contact tracing process, uh, exhibiting symptoms. On the left side, yes, they have to quarantine for 10 days. Uh, we wanna test after the fifth day. They are unvaccinated. We wanna make sure that we quarantine those employees. And as stated before, the SB 95 leave comes into play or district leave based on, uh, the appropriateness of that, at that time. And then on the other side, COVID-19 symptoms, no, but they've been exposed to a case. We still want the unvaccinated employee to quarantine because they have not been vaccinated, uh, or isolate, sorry, isolate for 10 days and also test as well. So that's a clear, uh, indicator of where we're going. Number one, we'll take care of our employees should they have work-related COVID, uh, exposure or infection. And then number two, that's the exposure protocol that we've laid out, uh, aligned with California Department of Public Health, our partners from AMLLC and some of our district, uh, protocols that we have in place. And next slide is, thank you.
Winnie, okay, so I got you. All right, Doctor Flores, go ahead.
So, Doctor Funches, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's very complex because I asked some of those questions and I appreciate you, uh, digging deep and, and resolving them. I, I was just thinking of a scenario.
Yes.
Okay, say we have high school kids, first period, and a couple of them have COVID and expose everybody in the classroom. and expose everybody in the classroom. And then those kids go to second and third. So, now we have a cascade of kids being exposed and other teachers, many teachers maybe because we don't know where all the kids are. So, have you thought of that scenario?
Sure, yes. And we hope we don't get there, right?
I know, I hope we don't get it, but
We have thought of that.
In case we do.
We have thought of that.
What, what are the anticipated protocols?
And so, Dr. Flores, right now, through our contact tracing process, we would identify those scholars that were exposed to the positive case. We would also, through the contact tracing process, determine those educators that were exposed to the positive case. And we would have to quarantine. We would have to.
All the kids that went, all of those kids were exposed and then they went to other classes and they exposed them.
That would be, that would be the current process that we follow. And Mr. Vatier, if you want to add to that at all?
So, very complex, right? It's like an if this, then this. And there's a lot of individual interviews that go on during this. And so, the Department of Public Health's latest guidance as it relates to classrooms, say we're in the room and I'm positive. I don't necessarily know at that time, but my parents call and say, hey, Eric was positive. The contact tracing team would go into the room, determine based off of seating charts where people were at, and then start individual interviews. Now, we are allowed to keep the kids in school according to the new guidance if some things were in play. So, if all the students were masked in the room, keep their face coverings on, which we know is our procedures, and we've experienced it for two days, that that's what's happening from visiting classrooms. If the students that were within the proximity remain asymptomatic, so they don't come down with any symptoms, they don't start to get any of the COVID symptoms, and if, and they can't do anything extracurricular, so any other outside extracurricular activities would have to stop on the campus. So, if they were in sports or band or something, those would need to stop for a 10-day period. And the family agrees to undergo voluntary testing two times a week. So, for the, for, for two weeks, they would have to get tested twice each week just to, just to ensure that they don't then come back positive. So, you see there's some steps in there. But if the, if the kids remain asymptomatic, they had their masks on, they keep their masks on, and the parents agree to testing, which we will have readily available at every single one of our campuses for these instances and for our employees to test as they choose to, then we can keep the kids in class. And so, we know that's a, that's a huge step that we didn't have when the pandemic started, right? Where we were just quar, everybody that was close proximity was quarantined, period. The science and, and the rules have changed a little bit for us, especially in a K-12 setting. And so, we think that, that those measures and the individual interviews that we're going to have with each individual person is going to help us keep our schools open, our scholars in class, and our educators going. And we do have the robust team with AMLLC. COVID liaisons will be on every campus. Testing will be available. And they will also have a team for contact tracing. Should we experience, Dr. Flores, your scenario, where, where the story's building and it's bigger than we think, we can immediately shift resources from across the district to get onto that campus to really assess what we have, what we don't have, and, and the next best steps so that, so that we can handle our kids and make sure that the schools stay open and make sure our employees are taken care of too.
How long does it take for test results?
So, the, the onsite ones that can be used for non-symptomatic students can be done in about 15 minutes.
Well, it's a quick, it's a quick one.
Yeah. And once they're symptomatic, it's the, the PCR test that needs to go to a lab. We are working that out with the state right now, but there are many courier boxes around us in the city. So, we would take the tests right there onsite with parent permission, take them, deliver them straight to a courier box. They go, the state has pickups. And then they're anticipating results in six to 10 hours. They, they say no, no greater than 48 hours is, is their, their blanket statement, but in reality, where they're seeing results come back is six to 10 hours. So, really, we could know in less than a 24-hour period if we can allow somebody to get back to.
They, they stay home, though?
They would stay home until those results come back, yeah, for the safety of everybody.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I hope that helped answer. It's a very complex system, but.
It's very complex and I, yeah. And there might be other factors that come into play, and I know you'll consider those, yeah.
All right. Ms. Abayos, followed by Ms. Rosales Medina.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I don't know if, I know we took it down. I don't know if we can bring it back up. I don't have a copy in front of me, and it was a little bit hard to see from here. But I did want to ask, okay, it sounds like you have two routes. One is for vaccinated and one is for unvaccinated, right?
Correct.
And so, just walk me through it again because I have a question, but walk me through the vaccinated process?
Sure. So, for vaccinated employees who exhibit symptoms, exhibit symptoms on the left side of the screen, if you will, and they've been exposed to a positive case, those vaccinated employees will isolate for 10 days and test. If they're vaccinated and they have no symptoms, we would just monitor for symptoms over a 14-day period if they've been exposed to a positive case.
Is, is that, would they be asked to voluntary, voluntarily test also?
We can't ask them to voluntarily test.
Okay. And what is the yes and no? I'm a little confused on each side. So, yes, if they are exposed with symptoms, then they would isolate for 10 days and test?
Sure.
Yes, for what?
The yes and no is, is it a confirmed case? So, on the left side, if it's a confirmed case, then yes, they isolate for 10 days if they had COVID-19 symptoms.
Just to help out, the, the, the yes and no are responding to the question above it.
Yes, the COVID-19 symptoms.
So, it's an if, then statement. So, if that answer is right, if the answer is yes, you do the box below. If the answer to that question is no, you do the box below.
Right. So, expo, so if they are exposed, exposure suspected, then they would not, no quarantine, monitor for, and then if they are yes confirmed, no testing, no isolation, no quarantine?
Yeah, I'll try to do it one more time and try to make it very clear.
I mean, I hear you, but visually, it's not making sense.
So, I'll try it one more time to see if I can make it clear. Right at the top of the pictograph, it's COVID-19 symptoms. And so, if a vaccinated employee is exhibiting COVID-19 symptoms, it says yes right there in the blue, the blue yes. And so, we also dig further. Were they exposed to a positive COVID case at work? And so, you say, yes, they were? Go ahead and isolate 10 days? No, they weren't, but we're going to go ahead and isolate them 10 days anyway because they're exhibiting symptoms.
Got you. Okay, got it.
That makes sense?
Yes, yes. So, now, go to the previous one.
Or the vaccinated, I think that might be the next one?
No, that answers, that answers the same question. Can you go back to the other slide?
Sure. I think the one before that.
Yes, that one. So, bullet number one, it says all work-related COVID-19 employees will be processed using SB 95 leave. So, employees will not be required to use their own leave for work-related COVID isolation quarantine, period?
Correct. We can use SB 95 leave, which is available through the federal government, and/or if it's work-related, we will allow them to quarantine through the district, which could become a worker's comp case. So, their own leave will not be used for work-related COVID-19 situations.
No matter how many times it happens. So, for instance, and I know you changed, I know you changed your protocols on the following slides, right? Because before, and correct me if I'm wrong, what we were doing is anybody who had been exposed regardless of vaccination or no vaccination were being recommended or asked to isolate for, you know, the, the time being. So, because we have adapted some of those, only people that qualify to get isolated will get isolated and be compensated through this SB 95, no matter how many times it happens.
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Abayos.
Okay. Ms. Rosales Medina?
I just wanted to clarify, since I want to take, take advantage that Mr. Vatier is also here. With regards to the water bottles, I think I received information from a parent that a child has to bring in their own water bottles. And just wanted to clarify, the point is that we do have fountains for water bottles versus the, the, how it was before where students would go to where their, where their mouth is and then get the water from there, right? The route, waterspout?
Yeah, great question. So, the, where our current state with the water status on the campuses is the, the rules were first to cap off all the fountains. And so, we did that and installed water bottle filling stations throughout every single school, big project. Then the rules changed and said drinking fountains are okay. So, we have started removing the, the covers from the drinking fountain. So, now we have both. We have regular drinking fountains and water bottle filling stations. We've also ordered water bottles. They are a bit delayed. I think we're expecting delivery of them. We were hoping they were going to get here over summer, but we're expecting delivery of them later this month. So, each student will get them from us, but currently, we're just messaging, if your, if your child wants to bring one, please do, and they can fill them up on each campus.
All right. Thank you. Because I know I, I wasn't sure what they were referring to, but this is a good clarification, especially for parents who are listening at home. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, two things. Just to segue off of Ms. Medina. On the mask, I know we purchased masks, but I heard from some parents that all sites weren't giving the students the mask. Have we, have we, have we instructed the sites to give the mask to the students?
We have. The masks arrived months and months ago and were sent out, deployed all to the school sites. Messaging has gone out numerous times for those to be deployed. So, I'd ask if, if anybody's experiencing that to just let us know so that we can dig a little deeper and find out where that's happening and what, what supports they need.
And to Mr. Irvin, I have heard from some parents that their, their students weren't offered masks. And I know we have them, so it doesn't make sense that we, we don't, are we, are we asking the students to ask the
Make a note again.
Teacher for a mask, or how's that working?
No, we are not. So, we've purchased, there's five face coverings, cloth face coverings for each student, and those are on the campuses. So, we just, we'll work on messaging this week to make sure that all of our site leaders know that so that they can get them.
And make sure they're getting the masks. It doesn't make sense not to get them.
Right.
And then on, just for clarification, SB 95, that's the, the federal government's COVID money, right? There, there's only 80 hours available for that.
That is correct. 10 days or 80 hours.
So, I just want to make sure that Ms. Abayos knows that you only have, it is limited amount. You only can use that one time.
But as far as I understood, you're filing under compens, Works Comp, right? And will they get compensated?
So, there are two ways to look at it. Use the SB 95 leave. However, if it's work-related again, if it happens again, we won't charge it to their own leave. We'll make sure as a district, we're covering that.
Right.
Just want to be clear, the SB 95 is limited. There's only 80 hours available for SB 95. Thank you.
Because my main concern is that employees don't have to use their work hours, right? So, regardless where it's coming from, as long as they, if it's not an exposure that they're, that they brought upon themselves, right? That it was in the workplace, that they are being taken care of.
You are correct, Ms. Abayos.
That's correct. That's absolutely correct. All right. I think that is all of the questions. Thank you so much. I appreciate you both.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. We are now moving on. 9.0 Reports and Comments. 9.1 Beginning with Board Members. And we will start to my left this evening with Ms. Abayos.
Oh, we're at that time.
We are there.
Can you come back to me? Sorry.
Yeah, I can go to Dr. Hill.
Madam President, well, I just want to start out with the public comments. I, I guess my concern is that we said, or what you read, Madam President, is that we were asked clarifying questions, but there was quite a dialogue tonight. And I'm just wondering if the rules have changed, and if that's the case, let's not just say clarifying questions because there was quite a dialogue. And I think the people who are making public comments should have a right to make their public comments and without that discussion. I also want to say thanks for the media coverage. It was wonderful yesterday. It appeared that everything just came off really clear and really good. And just appreciate the district, all of those involved in making sure that we communicated, that we care about our students, and we are doing good things. I further want to talk about the retreat we had Saturday. It was absolutely marvelous, one of the best ones. We've had some good retreats, but this was absolutely outstanding. And I want to thank Terry and Dr. Betters for the job they did in enlightening us. Sometimes we think we know it all when we don't. And so, it's always good to have that reinforcement. And I appreciate them so much for what they did. And finally, finally, I just want to say thanks to the staff. All classified, certificated, everybody was out there. I, I didn't hear from anyone yesterday, but I knew if there were some complaints, I would have. So, I didn't get any complaints. So, I knew things were going along quite well. And just want to say thank you for making it possible for our students and our parents to feel comfortable and feel safe. And my only comment, I ask that no one make a comment to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. I have to use this mic because my other mic is not working. So, I just want to make sure it's working. It sounds like it is. And I'm going to priority break Dr. Hill's request because I'm a comment on her comment. No, I'm just kidding. I'm going to piggyback off her comment, actually, is what I'm going to do. And like my colleagues, I'm sure we're all going to say this, just welcome back to all of our students and our families and our staff. Like you said, you know, we had some pretty outstanding media coverage for Samson and Adino City Unified School District. So, I just want to say that because I didn't see any other districts on any of the news channels. I just saw our district. So, really nice to see Samson City on the map and definitely the best part of our city, which is our school district. And, you know, really, really proud of our staff and our students and our families. They, you know, you expect coming back a little bit of anxiety, a little nervousness, a lot of excitement. And we saw all of that, but we saw a lot of excitement. A lot of our kids and our staff were at our sites at like 4:30 and 5:00 in the morning, setting them up for welcome back to school. So, you know, wow, just that amazing effort above and beyond by our students and our staff. And, and it showed. It definitely showed on TV. And wow, again, I was just super excited to see that, super excited that kids are back in school. I mean, that's what it's all about. And saw a lot of smiles and a lot of laughs from our students. And, you know, we're obviously doing our very best to put safety first and ensure that we're all safe. And so, we did have maybe some lines in a few places. So, we ask you to please be patient with us and our staff. We're doing the very best we can, but we want to ensure the safety of your children, the safety of you as our families, and definitely the safety of our staff. So, Madam President, that's my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Abayos?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah. So, I just want to say again, thank you for all of the work that every employee within the district has done, you know, during COVID, before COVID, and, you know, now in our return. I have also been getting a lot of great feedback. A lot of our parents and students are excited. I know I was very excited, my son, even though he wouldn't admit it, he was excited. But, but yes, so, thank you for that. Also, in the, in the spirit of collaboration, I think that we're coming together really nicely, not that we weren't before. But I think, you know, under new leadership, Dr. Flores says that Mr. Irvin is the Energizer Bunny. I say it's pure passion. You can tell. You know, you get energized when you are passionate about the work that you are doing, and I can completely see that. So, thank you for your commitment and, you know, your honesty and your transparency. Also, you know, thank you for the board retreat that we just had on the 31st. We had a great, you know, training in the morning. The second half, you know, we, we have to come back around it to set some board protocols so that we are clear as a board on how we're going to be moving forward. I will say I was a little disappointed to see that not all of the, you know, board members were present. I was really, really just frustrated. I'm not going to say more than that. But if we commit to, to do something, then we need to do it. And that was a date that we had all, all of us committed to way in advance, and we should have been there. And so, if we needed to reschedule, then we should have rescheduled because that, to me, I interpreted that as disrespect to myself. to me, I interpreted that as disrespect to myself and to the rest of us. And so I was not happy about that. But anyway, it was great. Thank you for the hard work. And I look forward to this 21, 2020, 2021 school year. 2021, 2022.
We still feel 20 is is on us. All right, Dr. Flores.
Can you move my mask for a minute? I just want to welcome everybody back. I did it earlier. And I look forward to this year. Have a lot of faith and a lot of passion for us to begin a new journey with our new leadership. And I am really excited about possibilities. Like to welcome Dr. Rick Esquivel, our new Assistant Superintendent of, of, let me see, equity, I'm sorry, I was way ahead of myself, Equity, Access, and Innovation. I really like that innovation part because we really want to innovate. We are poised to innovate. And in terms of equity, this board is committed to equity. We we believe that every child deserves the best education. I don't know if you noticed where Ms. Alcala, SBTA President, had in the back of her wall that a free public education is a civil right. And 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 when our police president of, I don't know where he is, oh, there you are, said that, you know, Mandela said the, the, what did he say? The most important weapon is education. Is that what you said? Oh, the most powerful weapon is education. And so it's true. Education makes a difference. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for education. I had, every single education was a free public education. I went through state universities for my BA, for my masters, for my doctorate. And I was afforded the opportunity to reach my potential. And so I believe that's the path I chose. But there's many paths that all of our kids would would follow as well. So that's very, very important. And secondly, I'd like to say that I'm honored to be a school board member with this board. I care for each one of you very much. We are, how would you say, we have a lot of responsibility. Mr. Irvin, we chose you. That means we have faith in you. We have full confidence in you. All our Assistant Superintendents, we value you very much. We recognize that you work very hard. Dr. Monades, you were chosen as deputy suit. We believe in you as well, all, everybody. And we're a powerful team. We are good listeners. We have to make hard decisions. And but with the best interests in our students, our, our staff, everybody, our community. And Saturday was an important time for us, for our board retreat, because we don't get to talk to each other very much. We don't get to be with each other very much. And for me, it was, I'm a lifelong learner. I'm probably reading like three or four books at a time, you guys. I mean, I'm, I mean, I put books down in my house, wherever I sit, and I pick them up. I even have them on my cell. And so I'm a reader. I send these guys so many things, articles that I read. I'm a prolific reader. But Saturday was special because we had, and I thank you, Dr. Rogers, for inviting Dr. Betters, who gave a very provocative and informative presentation and interaction about implicit bias. And, you know, the more we learn, the better we understand. And it was also important because we got to reconnect and connect with each other. We got to tell stories about our childhood, about some of our, you know, experiences that impacted us. And we're vulnerable. And it was a safe place to be vulnerable, to get to know each other. Our cabinet members were with us in the morning, which I appreciated very much. Because when you work as a team, you have to know each other. You have to learn to not just know, but respect each other and agree to disagree. Sometimes we don't agree, but we've we've made a pact to agree to disagree and not take it personally. And we all have a common goal, our kids. Our kids, our teacher, our employees, we believe in you, and we're a family. And I, in my culture, tenemos mucho cariño para todos. We love everybody. In a family, it's love that binds us. And so that was really important and really appreciate everybody. We have stuff to still do, which we will do in terms of protocols. But I think that was a really good start. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Rosales Medina?
I'm really excited with the new school year. So thank you so much for the earlier presentation on that. I do want to ask with regards to the Virtual Academy, I appreciate the email that was sent out with regards to some of the technical issues. But I would like to kind of get an update to make sure parents are also aware. I know many of us board members, we receive messages through different avenues. We have social media, Messenger, and I'll get messages from parents. We get text messages, we get emails. And I do appreciate that as well. But I know that when it came to the Virtual Academy, either they didn't get the message, just making sure that they also are able to keep updated with what's going on with their child's education when it comes to the Virtual Academy as well. But I understand technology is technology, and there's always going to be those difficulties. But just keeping them updated with that. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes, I think, you know, the one good thing we can say came out of COVID is, or the fact that I've never dreamed I would see students so appreciative of school. So, I mean, it was, there's a whole lot of bad about it, but to actually see students happy about going to school, I never thought I would see that. And so I think we all have a more appreciation for the standard education because of what we went through this past year. And I think as a district, we made the right decisions. And we built trust so that parents realize that we're not going to cut corners on safety. And even though we're back, we're going to be doing the testing. If we see issues and concerns, we'll address them, and we'll be forthright and honest about it. To Ms. Abayos, I apologize. My goal for Saturday was, it was realized. You guys had a great time. See, if I would have showed up, I would have messed it all up. So
Hurt though.
But I do have to say, as a board member, you you have to measure your stress levels and where you're at at a time. And you have to make decisions based on what you think is best for the entire situation. And that's truly and honestly, up until the last minute, I didn't know which way I was going to go. But in the end, I chose not to attend. But I didn't do it out of a lack of respect. Trust me, I wasn't thinking about you in terms of respecting and not respecting. It was just a personal decision that I made. And I'm sure I'm sure we'll have other times to get together and build on our relationships.
And if I may, I not only accept your apology, but also appreciate it. You know, I'm very, I have high expectations of myself. And, you know, therefore, I have high expectations of people around me. And I hold myself to very high standard. And I completely agree, you know, we do need to measure, you know, our levels and so forth. But I ran for a position full knowing that this, you know, required a lot of my time and effort and, you know, energy, and that it might be stressful. And so, you know, I left my son at home all day by himself. I could have been with him. And granted, the decision of leaving him, he's older, you know, he's in high school. But still, it's a Saturday that I chose to commit because we had already pre-established the date. We agreed on the date well, well in advance. And we kept changing the date because it wasn't working for one or the other. So once we had agreed on the date, I was under the impression we were all going to be there. And so I did, I was upset. And I like to come out and just put my emotions out there.
Appreciate that.
So I appreciate the apology.
Yeah. And I've been to many board superintendent retreats. Anyone who's been there with me know that is always high level of stress. It's give and take. And as I get older, I don't have the energy that I used to have. And this is one that I felt like it'd be best if I just passed on. With that, I do want to recognize Lois J. Carson. She passed away recently. And she was my political mentor and community mentor. She was 90 years old when she passed away. And up until the day that she passed away, she was active in the community. So for those of you who hate the fact that I'm on the school board, you can blame Ms. Carson for that. When I was a freshman in college, and we were promoting a party, and they counseled a party, and I wasn't going to accept no for her answer. And our advisor was an athletic director, and he said, I can't, we can't, I can't help you, Danny. I'm not going to lose my job, so you guys can have this party you've been promoting. It was a fundraiser for us. But he said, I have somebody you can call. And the person he gave me was a trustee who was Lois Carson. And she allowed us to have our event. And she said, I'm going to allow you to have the event under, but there's one caveat. If you do, you have to come back and work on my campaign. And that was my formal introduction into politics and a long relationship with Ms. Carson, working in the community and working with our youth. And she's just an amazing person. On Thursday, August the 12th, at the San Bernardino Community College trustee meeting, they're going to, they asked the people to come because they want to name a building after her at San Bernardino Valley College. So I encourage folks to come out on August the 12th at 4:00. And there may be some services for at 11:00 on the same day. So I'll keep everyone posted on that also. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments. And we definitely appreciate the collaboration and, you know, just the communication. And that is really the purpose of a retreat. It's not something you do all the time, but you have that opportunity. And I will say kudos to the team and to Mr. Irvin. It was something that we had talked about at the board, and I'll comment on it as I go from picking up what you all said. It was a lot of work, a lot of hard, hard decisions to, you know, make sure that it was worth the time and the effort. And as I shared, you know, I, I'm 24/7 as well, because I attend a lot of meetings, and I know what it's like, of course, to have a meeting that's meaningless. But any meeting that I'm participating in or leading or trying to give input, it is on the behalf of everyone else and not myself. And so I put my heart and soul into it, knowing personalities. You know, I've been on this board long enough to know personalities, and I try to, you know, adopt to that. And it's, it's, it's all about, I think, Ms. Abayos, you said it at the retreat, this is not Gwen's meeting. This is us, seven of us, working towards a common goal so that we can be clear, you know, on our thoughts, and we can be able to express and then come together and see how our expertise support each other. So I appreciate you all and what we did. And we know that our county partners are really excited. Even Mr. Alejandro mentioned that this evening. They're excited. It's important that we utilize our resources that are here. You know, oftentimes, people go outside. But we do have jewel of supporters that are here that can help us lift this work. And that's how we we partner. We partner with our parents. We partner with our community. We partner with those that are available, and they believe like we believe. My first phone call on, as I was getting ready to ride around and see schools, my first phone call actually came from our mayor, who was driving around. And at 7:00, or about 7:15, called me just to say, you know, the schools and everything is looking great, and I just want to take, I just want to tell you that. And, you know, people are out there, and they acknowledge what we're doing. You know, it does seem easy to some, but, you know, this, our schools don't look like they look because we don't care. You know, our teachers are not back doing what they need to do because they don't think we care. You know, we know sometimes there are some decisions that are made we may not disagree with. But that was a pleasant phone call, you know, for him to just speak, speak to me. And I shared with him that I would let the board and those know and the cabinet know. The other night, I will say to the board, you know, I don't know when the cabinet actually sleeps. All those board members that were getting, you know, just different little, I like to call them, just different little issues that came up, you know, because nothing is perfect. It's the first day of school after 16 months being out. So we expected some things to happen. But it was incredible, as Dr. Monares said, it was nothing like it could have been because they were ready. And then after they decided to debrief that evening, they were going at it in the wee hours of the night, because I was on the text message. They were communicating. And every concern that I received that that Ms. Rosales Medina let me know about or that came in, they were on it, either there at the school, live and in live in color. So it was a really, really conscious effort that, you know, we we applaud you for that because it was going into the point where I was like, go get them, team. I didn't know what else to say because it was, it was some heavy lifts in two days. So I love what, you know, Superintendent Irvin said, he, we need the first day, outside of the little quirks, the first day of what he even, and I'm not going to steal, you probably got them in your notes, but what he observed, to continue on every day. It's not just the first day of school was a song and dance, but every day will be good. I also want to acknowledge that after the retreat, I was able, Dr. Hill and I, we stopped by, actually, as tired as we were, or worn out as we were, Golf 61, which houses a lot of our kid, kids, getting them in that golf mindset. They've done this through virtual. I was, I was just surprised at the work that they were doing, even virtual, you know. And I, some of the kids, you know, I went online with them a few times, and they showed me the things that they could do learning golf virtually. And so we went and stopped by. They had their mask on. They were at Shannon Hills and spent the day there. And we just was a quick hello and encouragement and tell them, you know, first day of school was coming. And they were excited. They really were excited. Also, I had an opportunity with Dr. Wyatt and others. We did the superintendent, the superintendent, believe it or not, you forgot about that, huh? The superintendent's graduation. It was excellent. It was, it was just, you know, just loads of, just that the lift that those kids that continue to prevail. And that was my 13th graduation. So I was totally exhausted. But just being there with them because they had not only pandemic, but the struggle of trying to cross the line at the last end. And they did it. And it was 240 some. And the team just did a stellar job. And, you know, kudos out to to just helping them cross the line. Very, very important. So we were there. And then, lastly, as it was said, we are a family. And I truly, you know, we, Lois Carson is a loss to us, you know. But again, we walk in the footsteps of where they end, we continue that work. And our family, I'm understanding that we lost a teacher, and we would like to also close in the memory of Christine Perry Hill, Riley Prep Academy. So as we are beginning, you know, there are families that are in mourning. And so we want to definitely send a prayer out to that family and as we close to think about them. So thank you for allowing me those comments. We are now at 9.2 Superintendent and Staff.
Thank you.
Testing.
Thank you. Just really quickly, I will say that thinking about the first day of school, it was outstanding. It was absolutely excellent. I had a chance to visit, I believe, well, actually, about 30 schools, and I was had a chance to get into about probably 10, 15 classrooms. And I really enjoyed it. And I think that when you think about 180 school days, one of the things that I've been talking with staff about is every day should be a good day. 180 days of quality instruction has to be taking place. And I tell you, the first two days, we went on, we went out again today. So the first two days, outstanding. And every school I visited, I think that, again, I think the staff were excited about being back. The students were excited to be back. The campuses looked great. Every single campus looked great, outstanding. But those classrooms where I visited, it was clearly evidence that students were ready to be back. I saw a lot of several social, emotional related lessons. I saw teachers jumping into literacy and math. I had a chance to visit the high school campuses. So again, I have to stress that we have to stay So, again, I have to stress that we have to stay focused for 180 days though, right? Because what, because we know we get tired toward the end, right? We all get tired. But I'll still be in classrooms on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. I'll be on the ground. Our team will continue to, continue to do the work behind the scenes to support our teachers and our staff, but I was very happy with that. And also, I know that, you know, I don't want to prolong it, but I know there's questions, again, about transportation. We'll be bringing clarity to the transportation situation on the August 17th. We're going to do a high-level state of the district report, which is going to be a current state of the Transportation Department. And then, we're going to talk about what our desired state looks like. And again, I think over time, the goal is to get to a very effective and efficient system that's in the best interest of kids. And I do agree with Ms. Abios. I think the system just needs a deeper dive. But I do think that, I remind parents, so I want to make it clear, and I think we'll put something out in the parent square to all parents, that any issues or concerns regarding any issue within the district, reach out to our executive cabinet member or their superintendent. Because I think when you do that, we're able to resolve those issues quickly. So, I have to encourage you, we'll put a message out to all parents. Again, we'll put it out to our staff. I'll make it very clear, everyone has my email, most people have my cell phone. Reach out and call me directly because I think what happens is, if you come to me directly or one of my executive cabinet members, we can solve those issues very quickly. And I say that because sometimes if we don't do that, then we get too many people, everybody gets into the middle of a conversation, and then it goes left and right and south, and then there's a lot of misinformation. So, everyone always know my style is come directly to myself or my executive cabinet. We will be able to address those issues. But I do want to say that even though we do make every decision in the best interest of kids, we have to be, remember one thing, not everyone's going to be happy with a decision that's made. I, you know, I mean, it's tough to say that, but it's true, right? When you make a decision, someone will be affected by that decision that you make. So, we always try to make decisions good for kids, but we also know at the same time, not everyone's going to be happy with the decision, even though that's our goal, is to keep everybody happy. But it doesn't always work out that way. So, be patient, reach out to me directly. We will get messages out starting tomorrow to all of our stakeholders to reach out to me or my cabinet members with any issues and concerns, and we'll get our contact information there as well. And I think that's going to alleviate a lot of concerns going forward or any issues. And then, also, a couple of on-boarders. I want to be able to say that we have several new individuals. We have Ernesto Calas, who's the new principal at Cypress Elementary School. Christina Tesmer, Principal Bradley Elementary School. Christopher Teckel, Principal Henry Elementary School. Harold Alivo, Vice Principal King Middle School. And then, our very own Amy Coker, Director Elementary Instruction. Yeah, she's going to hold us to, she's going to be pushing that teaching and learning. And then, Yacel Reyna, Vice Principal Shannon Hills Middle School. So, with that, I would like to say that I'm looking forward to a great school year. And I know Dr. Flores, you think I'm the Energizer Buddy, but I will say this, I am very passionate about the work. And I do truly believe that every school should be a good school, and I think that we have to work every day to make sure that we're at the highest level of excellence for kids. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Irvin. And thank you so much for your responsiveness, again, and to your team is very important. So, we do appreciate that. Also, want to just encourage everyone, that state of the district is important because it's important for us to know where we are. So, we all, again, hopefully, we can rally the community around, you know, our efforts. And that's what we've always done, and that's what we are looking forward to do. And Superintendent Irvin, I forgot that it was, we had someone reach out to us, and I'm going to get the information, to also, because it is an issue that we do have with many of our parents, we may not even know, that are in a situation where they may be losing their homes due to the pandemic. And for now, I can say to the viewing audience, they can go on the San Bernardino City's website around the rent relief, but we maybe need to put something on our website as well so individuals know how they can get that support around rent relief. So, that's important. Thank you so much. We are now moving to 10.1, approval of the personnel report dated, report number three dated August 3, 2021, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
As presented.
Oh, all right. And be it resolved that the Board of Education approves personnel number three dated August 3, 2021, as presented. So, it has been moved and seconded. I did hear there somewhere, did you catch that? That's kind of, great. Oh, there it is already. Perfect. And we have 10.2, 45-day revision after adoption of the governor's budget.
Moved.
It's been moved and seconded. I think it was Ms. Rosales Medina, correct?
Yes, I had my mask on, sorry.
Okay. We are now at 11.0, consent items. Are there any items to be pulled?
Moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. It's been, I'm sorry, hold on, Dr. Hill. My problem. Okay, so, it's been moved and seconded. It was the same, it was Mr. Tillman and Ms. Rosales Medina? Got it? All right, so, someone has something to pull on item?
I'm sorry, not the two, but item 11.
Oh, you need to abstain?
Item 11.19, I need to abstain.
Abstain, okay, I'll please. And then, Ms. Abios?
So, based on some of the public comments that came in today, I would like to pull 11.5.
11.5, okay.
That's the one I wanted to pull as well.
Okay, so, did you say no, nothing? And then, you want 11.5? Okay, and?
11.13.
713? Wait, 11 point, I'm sorry, say that again, Ms.? 11.13. 11.13. Okay. And Mr. Tillman, did you, did you say any? No? All right. So, we have 11.5, 11.13, and 11.19. All right, it's been pulled, so we are ready to vote. Let's begin with 11.5.
Is there, I was going to say, is there anybody here that wants it? Because if they don't, it's easy just to...
I don't know. They're discussing it now. Is there a discussion around it? What is the request or what is the input?
Yeah, I think that the big question, if there's no one on the board who is, this is an item we want, it's just a rollover item, it's easy just to say we're not going to support it if you don't want to.
I don't know. I just had to pull it first and see what the discussion was. I do think there is a lot of comments around it.
Well, I know it's been pulled before in last, from last time. However, I, you know, in light of the comments that came in today, I would like to request additional information before it is back on the agenda for approval. So, I know that we can vote on it tonight, but I'm requesting that, you know, we get further information in terms of some of the things that have been brought up tonight before the board.
Table it. You would like to table it?
If, yes, if that's, that's what it is.
That's what you wanted to write, table it.
Any other comments on it? No one else, just, okay, go ahead.
I have a comment, Madam President.
Go ahead.
I, in furthering the discussion and inquiry, you know, is this a rollover item? What, what do we as a board gain from it? Why are we, why are we in it?
Even being a part, that's probably what the question, yeah.
What's the purpose? I mean, those details we should know. And as long as I've been on the board, it's been rolled over and rolled over and rolled over. And so, this is the, you know, the questions that were brought up by the public today were very pertinent, and I'm very happy that they did so that we can get more information about it, so.
Dr. what? Dr. what, or Dr. Hill?
Thank you. I appreciate us also putting this aside for a little while. You know, there are a few of us who are delegates, and we are a part of, SandDabs is a part of our discussion in our delegate meetings. So, I recommend that let us get more information from our delegate meeting, which is held the last Monday of the month. Thank you.
I'll just bring more information back because, to be honest with you, I don't have enough information. And secondly, this is, again, it's a renewal agreement that the district has been involved in for years. So, I will get back with the board via Friday update with more information, and then at the next board meeting, the board can decide. Thank you.
Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. And I agree with Dr. Hill. I believe it is part of our delegate assembly. And, you know, I believe, I'm not sure, but I thought a few of our folks on this board have served on SandDabs, haven't they? Have we had anybody serve on SandDabs?
Previously, we did.
Yeah. So, I thought at least a couple members, so.
Let me bring some information back.
Yeah, that'd be good to know and to get their viewpoint as well.
Okay, so, I agree, and I concur definitely with what Dr. Hill was saying, is that we are on, being that we're on the delegate committee, I think the due diligence is, it comes up, but currently, none of us are serving past individuals serve, but no one seems to remember what, what the benefit is. So, we, but there's a voice, I believe, that is missing. And so, if we are serving, we need to know that for clarity because it is not, you know, it's not a nonprofit type of, you know, organization, but it's supposed to be there on behalf of the kids. And if, even if we were to end up serving on that, that is our purpose, you know, right? So, we're going to pull that one off, and we're going to get, did you?
Yes, I just wanted to ask with, when we're getting the information as well, how they conduct their meetings? Because it seems like from the complaints that there was lack of transparency, and so I want to make sure that, how they conduct their meetings, and if they're not a 501(c)(3), then what are they? And then, but thank you for bringing that, because I know that was a concern of mine as well.
Yep, and they're not public. Mr. Tillman, did you, did you nod or no?
I didn't.
We're just taking it off.
Yeah, I just.
All right, so, we're going to take this one off.
Could I be just clear, though? I mean, it only makes sense if someone on the board is championing this. Someone has to say, "We want to spend money on this." I'm not hearing that right now.
No, and it's my understanding, we used, prior to me, I believe the seat that I was in, the person was actually on there. But so far, we've just been delegates. We have not been on SandDab currently in this administration, so, what the benefit is. All right, so, thank you. We're going to take that one off, right? And we're going to move to 11.13.
I just wanted to get clarification. I know that we have several law offices that we're contracting with, and with their services, specifically, wanted to clarify, what are they working directly? I tried to look at the contract. It didn't, it wasn't specific enough, so I wasn't sure who can give me more information on that. Yes?
Medina, that, our classified employees that are facing any disciplinary actions, they have a statutory right to have a hearing. They have a statutory right to appeal the decision with the Personnel Commission, and we need an impartial third party, if you will, and this provider provides that.
And have we used them before then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's prepare to vote. There's no further discussion. Thank you. And lastly, 11.19? And Dr. Hill will be abstaining?
Moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Did you get the second with, from Dr. Wyatt? All right.
Is Dr. Hill on the board or something?
Yes.
I believe.
Yes.
Say my name?
Mr. Tillman. Mr. Tillman holding up the meeting. Okay, all right, it's recorded. Thank you. Motion carry. We are now at 12.1, staff review items and updates requested by the board.
Board, so, tonight I recorded a few items for you. Most were actually answered during the meeting. But I started with Mr. Danny Tillman asking that we add the transportation issues to a future meeting in order to review, for the board to review them. Mr. Tillman also then asked that we would make sure that our school sites know to distribute masks to students. Mr. Irvin actually asked that we would make sure we encourage parents through Parent Square to reach out to the superintendent or cabinet if they have specific issues that they need to have resolved. Dr. Rogers requested that we include a link to the City of San Bernardino Rent Relief Program to help our families recover during this time. And Ms. Myra Abios also echoed by Dr. Flores, Dr. Hill, Ms. Rosales Medina, and a couple of others, I think, also asked for additional information to come back about the SandDabs item. Specifically, what do we gain from it? Why are we in it? How do they conduct meetings? Are they a 501(c)(3)? And respond to other questions asked during public comment. And those were the questions that I had.
Thank you so much, board. That was covered, okay. We are now moving to 13.0, our closing 13.1, our adjournment of the board meeting. Remember, we want to briefly pause and remember Christine Perry Hill, the Riley Prep Academy. There she is, definitely remembering her and her family. Thank you, board. And is there a, thank you so much. All right, thank you to our viewing audience. We appreciate your patience, and we will see you at our next board meeting. Thank you again, and God bless you all. And welcome back. We're better together. I know I'm probably flipping that around, but.